We will call our business meeting to order. Everybody can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, we will start with special recognition. Dr. Pierce will lead us through. We will be welcoming our student school board representatives, representative and representative-elect, and then we will be introducing new Kennewick School District administrators. And while we get started, I will take a motion to excuse Brittany from today's meetings.
I will move to excuse Glenn Earl from today's meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Mike, Patty, you will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany, okay, excellent. Well, we're really excited this evening because last year's student board representative-elect is now the student board representative. And we have a new student board representative-elect who's here this evening. So that's Annie Maltoes, as you all know, and Diego Anguiano, as you all know. And they're going to start us off tonight by coming up and introducing themselves to the board and just saying a little bit about themselves and whatever it is you would like to share. So why don't we start with you, Annie? But Diego, why don't you come on up too? And we'll let you introduce yourselves.
Good evening, board members. I hope you've all had a wonderful day. I wanted to take a few seconds to tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Annie Maltoes. I am a senior at Southridge High School. Go Suns! I'm involved in the girls soccer program and various other extracurricular activities. I am looking forward to being your student voice this year, and I'm honored to be up here with all of you. Let's have an amazing year. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Is that Michael?
It should be. It might not just be.
Testing one, two.
Okay, good evening. My name is Diego Anguiano, and I have the honor of joining you guys this year as the Board of Directors Student Representative-elect. A little about me, I'm a junior at Kamaikan this year. Go Braves! And I'm doing running star at Washington State University Tri-Cities. So I'm really happy to be joining you guys tonight, and let's look forward to a great meeting.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, well done. And we're going to hear a little bit more from Annie during the report section. So that's great. The other people we wanted to formally introduce this evening are the new administrators who've joined our district this year. And you've seen their faces in announcements, but you may not have met them all in person. So they are all here with us this evening, and I'm just going to share their name and position and have them stand up. And so you can put a real face with a name. And of course, we've got board members who regularly visit schools and so forth. So I'm sure you'll be out and about meeting some of these people in person. But I'll start with Dr. Tom Realheart. And I did formally introduce Tom at the last board meeting. Tom's our new Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and we're really glad to have him in our district. He's working hard and got a lot going on. He joined us July 1st. Inez Capatio is the new principal at Eastgate Elementary. And we're really excited to have Inez here in our district and leading the efforts at Eastgate Elementary. So welcome, Inez. Scott Hammond, that's the new Assistant Principal at Chinook Middle School, joining the team there. Hard at work, lots going on. Glad to have you here in the district, Scott. Kent Nixon is here. He's the new Assistant Principal at Foresta Elementary. And so we're really excited that Kent has joined our district. His principal is here as well. So Ms. Dora Johns is here. So thank you for being here, too. Dora's not new to the district. But she's here with Kent, so I just wanted to say hello. Curtis Reether. I didn't see if I saw Curtis. And sometimes, last-minute things come up in the life of school administrators. So unfortunately, he's not here this evening. But when you're next at Kamaikan, we'll make sure you have an opportunity to meet Curtis in person. We're really glad to have him on our team. And finally, Chelsea Benegas. They had some work in the Special Services Department as well. Chelsea works here in our district office. She's an Assistant Director in our Special Services Department, and she's a great addition to our team, too. So we made a bunch of excellent hires this year, and we're really happy to have all of these people on our team. So we just wanted to have them here tonight so they could meet all of you in person. And I told everybody, I told them all that after this portion of the meeting, they are welcome to the day and free to go.
All right. Get there already. Oh, there we go, the first just came. Totally kidding. Totally kidding. All right, well, welcome to our new administrators. Welcome, Annie, Diego. We look forward to this school year and working with you guys. And of course, Annie, Diego, we, as a student rep and rep-elect, we value your guys' insights to kind of what's going on in school and those things. And so please don't hesitate to share comments, concerns, questions, anything like that. We want to make sure that you're able to be able to do that. So if you have any of those during discussions, feel free to jump in and share your thoughts. So we appreciate the work you guys will be doing this year, for sure. All right, moving on to number four, we have communications from parent staff and district residents. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parent staff and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It's neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with speakers' remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for those words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help us model for our students what respectful and inclusive community looks and sound likes. Guidelines for addressing the board. When the board president calls your name, please come to the podium at the front of the room. You have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight will display on screen will let you know when to begin, when you have one minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for being here this evening. And do we, do we have anybody online? Always easy to grab them first, if we have anybody online. Okay. All right, so first up, and please, I apologize if I messed up some of these names. So Jeff Pyros. Pyros. I'm butchered, I'm sorry about that.
Jeff, you got it.
I got Jeff, right.
Hello, board. My name is Jeff Pyros. I teach at Hawthorne. I'm here tonight to ask the board to vote against replacing the district's commitment to equity statement. I emailed you guys about this last June. Micah, I appreciate you taking time to meet with me in the summer. As a teacher in a Title I school, I'm particularly troubled about the desire to remove the phrase, "We are committed to supporting the enhancement and development of equitable students to close achievement gaps." This is something we should be embracing. Equity in education is actually a good thing. Equity involves recognizing and addressing the different needs of individuals to ensure that everyone has access to the same opportunities. Equity means we're leveling the playing field. In our schools, this looks like equity providing additional resources for our students, such as tutoring or specialized learning materials or programs for students who may be struggling or who come from disadvantaged backgrounds. This is crucial in our district. When you look at the achievement gap in our district between low-income students and non-low-income students, the data is staggering. There's a 29-point gap in ELA between low-income and non-low-income students. There's a 26-point gap in math. This gap is even bigger when you look at our language learners. We're not talking about a small population here either. 59% of our students are considered low-income students. The good news is we can close this achievement gap. According to work done by Eric Jensen, if this student has an above-average teacher engaged in his strategies for five straight years, the gap can be eliminated. That means that we can interrupt the poverty cycle right here in Kennewick. What keeps me up at night, though, is that's five years. That means it can't be up to a single teacher or a single school. It's got to be up to the entire district. And that's where we need your commitment. It's important to tell our students, staff, family and the residents of Kennewick that KSD is committed to supporting the enhancement and development of equitable systems to close achievement gaps. Thank you for your time.
Jeff? Thank you, Jeff. Next up is JoJo Davis.
Hi, my name is JoJo Davis. I have lived in Kennewick since 1971. I'm a proud 1989 graduate from Kennewick High. And just living in this community all my life, this community has changed in glorious ways, and our community seems to always support our schools. Life in Highlands is going great. One of the many Title I schools in our district, and we are succeeding. And it's because of our partnership, Community Schools and Nellie Cordenis. 29 years ago, I started in this job. I spent many nights, many weekends, helping families fill out Section 8 applications, going to the food bank, getting clothes, all of those things. Working in Highlands is a very high-need school. I can't even imagine those of us that are school employees doing this without the help of community and school. The needs have just skyrocketed the last 30 years in our community. Highlands parents, thanks to the counselors and CIS, can focus on raising their kids, their employment and relief of concerns because of KSD's partnership with CIS. The board has been very vocal about counselors' college and career, college and career. We can't do that effectively if our partnerships with CIS is taken away from us. Finally, one word kept popping up this week: autonomy. The board has complained a lot about the state taking away your autonomy when it comes to running the school district. One of the ways that this decision, if you do make the decision to remove community schools, you're removing the autonomy from Title I schools' administrators and the staff. That autonomy we need, that $60,000 that Brittany mentioned the other day, that's the decisions that the Title I schools see that is fulfilled with community and schools. Please don't make a decision that leaves Kennewick's most vulnerable populations without a program that has proven itself year after year. If you need names of families and kids who have been positively impacted, call me. Please.
Thank you, JoJo. Okay, so next up is Christine Braun. Braun?
Brown.
Brown? Christine Brown, sorry.
I don't know. Is there a Braun?
Christine Brown. And it looks like we're ceding some time to you, so you all have four minutes? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was eight.
Talk fast.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I appreciate the work that you do with school board members. I know it's a lot of work. My name's Christine Brown. I am a Kennewick patron, and I am also a former board member of communities and schools. So that's what I want to talk about. Nearly 10 years ago, the big three districts locally here wanted to do something I consider extraordinary, to try to change the outcome for many at-risk children. So they started a communities and schools affiliate. That model puts a trained, knowledgeable and caring adult inside a school setting. The founders of CIS at the national level realized that relationships with children, relationship between a child and a trusted adult can create change, can foster change. That is the premise of their program. The range of the issues site coordinators tackle is wide. But to illustrate what some of the staff are doing from time to time, let's look at the issue of chronic absenteeism. It's a post-COVID challenge right now, and I know that many of you are aware of it. When you miss 18 days out of 180-day school year, you're missing basically a month of school. That's considered chronic absenteeism. Eric Rosen with the Tri-City Herald drilled down on absenteeism locally in an article last April. He reported there are 16,000 students chronically absent. Yes, I said 16,000 Tri-City students are chronically absent. That's one in three. That's 33%. That is a huge issue. We're higher than the state and national average, which is 25%. That's concerning. So why aren't they showing up? Well, the reasons are also as long as any list could be. Transportation, mental health, bullying, not feeling welcome. Student provides childcare at home while the parent works. The student works. Homelessness, drug and alcohol addiction. I haven't even started a list, but you get the idea. CIS staff work collaboratively with parents, teachers and the student, find out what's in the way of attending, then how to move it. Maybe it's a bus pass, a tutor, an alarm clock, an attendance buddy, a support group, a physical reward, whatever it takes. And this is generally an issue that you don't solve once. You go back time and time again, in some instances, to get a child through school. So after 10 years of communities and schools, why stay with communities and schools? Why stay with CIS? Well, I looked at this, I thought about this for myself, and I want to share with you, if I get to them, seven points. Number one, they're part of a national and state organization that offers training, financial support and standards, standards for the model of the program. Two, as a private nonprofit, CIS has established a track record of fundraising and grant writing to supplement their services. This is a huge benefit to our local schools. They supplement the money. Three, CIS is a data-driven process. They collect and analyze data constantly. They don't guess at situations, they look at their data. Four, there's a tremendous benefit to share knowledge between districts. CIS now serves schools in Pasco, Richland, Finley, Prosser and Kennewick. So you can see cross-pollination is possible about best practices. That seems worthy. Five, they have the administrative structure to handle multiple schools and still remain true to the model. Six, leverage. They have the ability to leverage donations from the community. If that's money, if that's food, if that's clothing, if that's a bicycle for Johnny because he changed and he attends school all the time, whatever it might be. And lastly, number seven, why reinvent the wheel when this one works so well? My time has ended. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Next speaker is Kathy Clayton.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Clayton. As a retired elementary principal, I was honored to be asked to serve on the very first Board of Directors for Communities and Schools of Benton Franklin in 2015. I served on the board for five years, believing wholeheartedly in the mission of CISBF. I did this because, as a building leader, I knew firsthand that the needs of our students and families could be met through partnerships with so many community resources. But it was extremely difficult for us to cultivate those partnerships with our overworked building leadership team. Our school, and more importantly, our families, would have benefited greatly by having a student support coordinator. Thus, I have this reason for my unwavering support for this organization. In 2015, CIS provided two student support coordinators in Kennewick, one at Edison Elementary and one who was shared between Legacy and Phoenix High Schools. The program was successful enough that Kennewick School District leaders wanted to replicate it in other schools. Funding being limited, CIS and the school district have shared funding for this model, making it possible to serve students in more schools. Over the past nine years, as CIS has grown to provide services, they've gone to 11 schools in Kennewick. Over the past nine years, they have really been able to provide much more of a higher percentage of support monetarily with the school district, much more than we were able to cover when we first started in 2015. We're really pleased that we're able to cover the costs for student support coordinators, extensive training, addressing employee supervisor questions, data monitoring and salary and all the tax-related issues that come with the organization. Principals are pleased that they're able to work with CIS and that CIS works with their staff. It's the partnership, oh, my time has ended.
Go ahead, finish.
I'm sorry?
You can go ahead and finish.
Okay, thank you. It's this partnership between CIS and Kennewick School District that makes it possible for them to support over 470 students last year for the investment of the $660,000, as well as serving thousands of others in the Tier One model. It's a tremendous value that you're getting for this. The CIS model involves a comprehensive support system that includes not only personnel, but also access to all the community resources, partnerships and data-driven resources, and a tracking system for students. Establishing a similar infrastructure from scratch would require substantial startup costs, likely exceeding the available budget. As a champion of communities and schools, I encourage you to maintain CIS as the more effective and cost-efficient option, rather than attempting to replicate the CIS model within the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Next up, we have Anthony Contreras.
Good evening, board. My name's Anthony Contreras. I come to you as the board chair for communities and schools, but also as a foster parent here in Kennewick. This is a new adventure for my husband and I. And when I tell you, in speaking with other foster parents with the supports needed to keep one child in the home, it's not something that a family can do on their own. It's something that takes a full community, and communities and schools has been a part of that community for years. The CIS model is based on individualized services. It's very person-centered. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. With the kids that we're getting into foster care, majority of them have behavioral issues that require that personalized, individualized support. They've developed a lot of community trust, working with various community partners. They've established some really meaningful relationships with other nonprofits, as well as other government agencies. And replicating those relationships will take a really long time. They've also got proven results. They've improved student outcomes for at-risk youth. It is an evidence-based model, and as I mentioned, as a foster parent, that's something that makes me feel better when I'm meeting with them and talking about the issues that my child has. The cost itself at $660,000 for 470 kids roughly comes out to $116 per kid for one month. There's nowhere in this community that you can find case management for $116 a month with the intensive support that the students will need. So again, I highly encourage you to continue the partnership with communities and schools. As a parent here in Kennewick, it's something that the kids in my home are going to need and others in the communities as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Next up, Corinne Burling.
So it's Corinne.
Corinne.
I get that a lot.
Sorry about that.
I've had years of being mispronounced. Hi, my name, thank you, dear school members. My name is Corinne Burling. I'm a dual-language fourth-grade teacher at Eastgate School. I've been teaching for over 25 years. This is my 14th year at Eastgate. I'm here tonight because I've learned that the community and schools program might be in jeopardy of being removed from schools. I would like to relate a wonderful way that a CIS helped a former student of mine. A child desperately needed classes. I sat her in the front row all year, and she could barely see the writing on the whiteboard. Her family did not have a working car and was unable to get her to the eye doctors. An extra wrinkle to the problem is that I knew this child would most likely qualify for an IEP in the resource room. However, until the student got classes, she could not be tested, which meant she could not qualify for the services she needed. I felt so powerless watching this student struggle in my class. My hands were tied. The following year, a CIS worker at Eastgate worked with a CIS worker at Westgate, where my student's sister attended. The two CIS workers solved the problem by coordinating a ride to the eye doctor's office via the Westgate principal. CIS helped my student get glasses, which then resulted in my student qualifying for an IEP. I would like to leave you with some final thoughts. CIS helps the neediest of our students, students who struggle to connect to school because of barriers, due to divorce, poverty, attendance, mental illness and language. CIS workers are very often the glue that connects our most vulnerable students back to school, back into the classroom, back in front of teachers.
Great story, thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is Ubi Creek.
Buenas noches. Mesero directo de las escuelas de Kennewick. Es un placer estar aquí con ustedes. Good evening, my name is Ubi Creek, and our family has lived in Kennewick for over 40 years. Our daughters attended Washington Elementary, Park Middle School and Kennewick High School. And as a stay-at-home mom, I was involved in their schools. As our girls went through their school years, I got pulled into the classroom as a classroom mom, a PTA officer, and eventually a booster van president for Kennewick High School. It was during those times that I became aware of the minimal representation and diversity in many of the decision-making positions of the school and the school board. Sadly, not much has changed. Though I do not attend Kennewick School Board meetings regularly anymore, I do watch them periodically to stay informed as to the happenings and changes in our schools. And I want to see how my tax dollars are being spent, invested, shall I say, in our students and families. The June retreat meeting was one meeting I made a point of watching as for wanting to see how the new board was jumping. It was not long. It was long, but I knew that it would be as I've been part of the participation in the past before. The reason I'm here is what I heard Cindy McMullin saying at the, was the consultant that she shared during her self-assessment portion of the meeting. Her comments to you about your cultural, racial and ethnic understanding and sensitivity regarding half of the student population in the Kennewick School District. So I want to echo her concern. Though there are more multicultural representation, staff in our schools, all the way to the administration level, there is still much work to be done. To that end, I'm wanting to share an opportunity to help the board on that journey. I have been a board member in a variety of I have been a board member in a variety of boards in the community, and there's sometimes some diversity and sometimes not so much. So, I'd like you to take into account what I'm going to share with you. In closing, I would like to share the opportunity with the three, that the three boroughs Community Foundation Board went through, and for sure grew an understanding towards each other and those we hope to serve. The training is called Governance with Equity, DEI for nonprofit boards, that I would like to encourage you to investigate. I've given that information to Patty, and I'd like her to share it with you. So, yeah. When I look over here, it makes me really happy because I see a lot of people that look like me. So, let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ubi. Next up, we have Erica Bolt.
Good evening, Dr. Pierce and members of the board. Thanks for having me this evening. My name is Erica Bolz. I'm a retired assistant superintendent from Richland and most recently Pasco School Districts. I don't normally speak in terms of I language, but on my watch, we founded the CIS Benton-Franklin affiliate in Richland, partnering with Kennewick and Pasco in 2014, mostly because I took some heat from my counterparts in Kennewick and Pasco at the time for starting another initiative and not being forward-thinking and inviting everybody to the table. So, didn't want to make that mistake twice. I also presently serve on the board. I have Kennewick roots as well. I started at Kennewick High as a student teacher and coached a couple of years of tennis, so I have been able to work in all three districts in my career. I won't hit you with a bunch of numbers and statistics because I think Ms. Clayton, Ms. Brown, and Ms. Davis really represented that eloquently. What I will say is, when we knew that we were overmatched, as demographics were changing rapidly in Richland, we looked all over the place at what would be the most effective partnerships to help the students most on the margins. Communities and schools was absolutely the resounding choice. And the resounding choice were the support that it has at the national and state level, as well as a local affiliate. What I really came to appreciate about CIS was, is two things, and I think those two things are enduring. One, the power of the network. When you have 30-some folks working across five districts with chemical dependency specialties, with MSW degrees, having worked in a number of different social agencies, both public and private, the ability to access resources that these folks have inside of the network is absolutely second to none. It simply can't be replicated by a sophisticated local school district, whether that be Richland, Pasco, or Kennewick. Secondly, our student support coordinators, who serve up to 40 students and their families individually, are providing the supports across our communities for the most marginalized folks that we serve. And I think who we are as a community in the tri-cities has everything to do with how we treat those who need us the most. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I appreciate the work that you do. Having attended board meetings for 14 years, I'm going to make myself scarce. It's hard to get me out to one, but I think this is a really, really important cause. And again, appreciate your opportunity to... Thank you for taking the opportunity to listen.
Thank you, Erica. All right, and our last speaker of the evening, Jan Link.
I just don't want you to forget about me.
Nope, got you, Erica.
Never, Jan, never.
I do approve of giving kids, because there's nothing more important than our children that we have. And I do have some handouts. It'll make my speech real quick. Anyway, I am Jan Link, and I own property in Kennewick. I don't live here. I live in McHale Teo, but I care about Kennewick, and I care about the tri-cities with my family. I came to you last spring talking to you about a middle school academic success learning lab program, based on the premise that all children can learn, but not in the same way or in the same amount of time. Time is our culprit. We only have six hours a day, 180 days, but time is not an excuse. Two public school challenges. One is encouraging all adults to believe that education is more than just providing the opportunity to learn. Students must be held accountable and responsible for their learning, and adults need to provide additional time and structure for this learning. The parent guardian must become our team member. Second challenge, expecting a student to develop an excellent work ethic. You hear it out in the public all the time. Children do not have work ethics as they leave us, and that's really an important skill that we need. Large number of children are not achieving a grade-level standard. My question is, are students being instructed at their level of achievement? My second question, could feeling behind and struggling be a major factor causing our mental health crisis? And I ask you the question, would you go somewhere every day if it was a continuous struggle for you? In McHale Teo, we are very serious of what we're doing. I am working with that one school I want you to watch very closely because we feel we have answers to the academic, social, emotional issues. One is that we have taken data, and we have, we're taking data from the fifth graders coming into middle school, and not coming to school is a major issue. We're working with the parents right up front. We have 40 out of 280 that miss so much. But we have the I Ready, the Basic Facts, SBA, fifth-grade grades, medical absences, second language, behavior, special programs, and we're getting data on the children and working with parents. We're doing Basic Facts because kids do not know their Basic Facts, and I know my time's up. It's all in here. We graph it. We help parents. We have contests. We're doing the Sasquatch for reading. We have all these things going to help children be engaged in their academics. I was a high school principal at elementary, and I agree with...
Hey, Jan, can you send me an email of somebody I want to connect you with? Jan, I said, can you send me an email of somebody I'd like to connect you with?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, everyone who shared tonight. We do appreciate it. We will be moving on to consent items, and if nobody has any questions, I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll move to accept the consent items as presented.
Thank you. Mike, Patty, if you will, call, vote, please.
Mr. Miller? How did I... I'm sorry.
I guess I skipped a lot.
Mr. Clonner?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
It's so loud.
All right. Moving along, we have communication follow-up, and we'll start.
Yes, thank you. I'm ready. Yes, okay. Thank you. So, wanted to follow up on one of the items that came up at the last meeting. At the last meeting, there was a question about the status of the superintendent search. So, actually, President Galbraith and I wanted to follow up on that. And so, as everyone knows, I'm retiring at the end of this school year. And last year, the board began a search process, and initially, we had planned to seek a deputy successor superintendent who would oversee operations for this school year and then become superintendent in next school year, at the end of this year, when I retire. And the board engaged Northwest Leadership Associates and completed some of the initial search processes, including conducting surveys and holding focus groups to seek feedback from staff and community regarding desired characteristics of the next superintendent. The position was posted in March. The board had an executive session to evaluate applicants for the deputy successor superintendent. Ultimately, no decision was made to bring applicants forward to interview, and we communicated all of that to the community at that time and shared that sometime during the 24-25 school year, the board would resume the process to search for a superintendent to join the district again on July 1, because I'll be retiring at the end of June. So, now that we've started the school year, we just wanted to, you know, kind of update people on where we are. So, the board will be working to put together a timeline, a concrete timeline for the search. And Gabe and I plan to meet with Bill Jordan from Northwest Leadership Associates in the next couple of weeks to start talking about that. Generally speaking, the position will likely get posted again later this fall, superintendent posting this fall, so there's lots of ample time for it to be posted and for people to, you know, inquire, talk to Bill, people to apply, and so forth. So, we don't have the concrete timeline to share yet, but just to loop back to let people, remind people of what happened last year and where we are this year. And when that concrete timeline is developed, obviously, you know, the board will all be engaged in that, and then we will make sure that gets widely communicated to staff and families and the community.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Pierce. And I don't have anything from the last meeting to follow up on as well, so we will jump into our superintendent board member reports, and we will actually start with Annie.
Good evening, board members. Today, the superintendent student advisory council meeting. There are many new smiling faces there today, which was great, as well as continuous discussions about our total district goals. More specifically, do the students in the group feel that those targets are being met at their individual schools? We then discussed some main focus points for the meetings to come, such as difficulty with counselors throughout the high schools, lack of advertisement on SATs, LSATs, ACTs, and application information for running start. We ended with a discussion on the recently implemented phone policy and how it has been enforced in schools, and how we are going to get information out to parents for future instances.
Great. What, can I ask you, what was the consensus, I guess, with the phones? Because that's a big deal now, like, all over. So, what did it say?
We discussed how different teachers are implementing it differently in their classrooms and how it's kind of affecting their school day. I would say half the students liked it and felt it helped them be more successful in school, and half the students felt like they wanted their phone break back, which I get both sides, but we were kind of split right down the middle.
Okay. Awesome. Great. Thank you so much, Annie. Dr. Pierce?
Okay. Well, overall, we've had a really good start to the school year, and it's been a very busy start to the school year. At the welcome back this year, our theme was Mission Possible, and we really focused on our district mission for our students. We highlighted the efforts that are collectively taking place throughout our district to realize that mission for our students, to focus on our three student-focused goals, and we recognize schools for growth and progress that they're seeing in student outcomes. And you're going to see some of that tonight, and we'll talk about some of that tonight when the K-12 student academic, you know, presentation is made. So, your board will see some of that. So, I want to share that. I also wanted to take just a few minutes to highlight and recognize last year's Southridge High School esports team. So, last May, we recognized spring athletics and activities, and unfortunately, esports was inadvertently left out of that recognition opportunity. So, I want to share some information tonight. Coach Jason Giancola from Southridge High School shared that last year's teams did an amazing job, with nine of the 10 teams making it to playoffs and two making it to state. Those two teams were League of Legends and Super Smash Brothers. The League of Legends had an uphill battle going into state with the third position locked in. They practiced hard, and they came out finishing second overall at state. The Super Smash Brothers team also did extremely well during the season. They competed against some tough teams, but they pulled out wins in their eight matches going into state with only two, with the only undefeated record in the state. So, while at the state competition, their team's goal was not to lose a single game within a match, and apparently, each match is divided into five games with varying point values assigned to the match seed. And the point values are two points for the fourth and fifth players, three points for the third, and four points for the first and second players. So, I hope you're following. During the state tournament, they went 57-3, only losing one game, but not the match. Okay, so, Coach Giancola shared that beyond the games, he really pushes students to see about the opportunities that esports provide beyond high school, and he shared that in 2024, they had three current students and two former students go on to play at the collegiate level. Skylar, Talon, and Tam are going on to play at Columbia Basin College for their Overwatch II team. Ryland graduated two years ago and took a gap year, but will also be competing for CBC on Overwatch II. That's the name of the... And lastly, Daniel will be going from CBC to the University of Idaho to play for the Val Rants team. So, it's pretty awesome. Yeah. They're hoping to really grow their team and club this year, and they have, and hope to have another phenomenal year. So, we wanted to take the time to say a big congratulations to Coach Giancola and all the Southridge High School students. Okay, well, he said brush. So, I'm so sorry.
That was a very exciting...
I didn't know.
That was a very exciting play-by-play.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the correction.
I was getting into it.
I could be an esports...
Yeah, you could be a commentator.
Yeah.
The color commentator.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. Mike?
Really not much. Just wanted to welcome Annie and Diego. Welcome. Hopefully, you guys will enjoy this. It'll be a good learning experience for you. Please ask questions if you guys, you're going to have them. So, please reach out if you guys need me. Other than that, I don't have any.
Thanks, Mike. Dr. Miller?
So, yeah, with the beginning of this new school year, it's been really busy. Several schools, been to several open houses, been to meeting some community partners. And, but as I said, I've said previously, during my time, I feel rather than giving a travelogue. For me, I think what's important is to let you guys know what's on my mind and what I'm thinking about. The, I appreciated all the comments, particularly talking about some of the needs, particularly related to the most underserved and most at-risk segments of our student population. And it's been something I've been looking into quite a bit, as I expressed during the study session, spent a couple hours with CIS this week. I really appreciated their time. I've really just been trying to look into this issue because I think, as people may know, the improving, improving the academics is a passionate area of mine, and particularly helping to prepare students for when they leave from high school, not just graduation, but beyond. So, I've been, I've been looking at some of this stuff. One of the things I've seen that I did want to highlight a little bit, and it goes back to actually a comment that was made several meetings ago, talking about statistics that we look at and ones we don't. And one of the things, one of the board members, it might have been Micah, that had brought up, I don't remember for sure, back and look, but they talked about single-parent homes and the impact that had. I've just been looking at some of this stuff because trying to figure out what are the, what are some of the key factors that influence success in school? And one of the things I saw was, this specifically looking at fatherlessness, and it was talking about homes that have, they're single-family homes that have no father in the home, and the impact that has. These are some statistics by the National Center for Fathering, and they talk about children that come from fatherless homes are four more times likely to be in poverty. They're 10 times more likely to abuse chemical substances. They're nine times more likely to drop out. They are 11 times more likely to be involved in violent behavior. Really, the list goes on and on. And so, one of the things I'd like to challenge our district is, is that I really do think that, particularly looking at single-parent homes, they face very unique challenges. I've got four kids of my own. I have an amazing wife who is incredible. I don't know how I would do it on my own. And so, I, you know, as we talk about looking at these programs, whether it's CIS or whether it's developing a program within Kennewick School District, I really think we need to be reaching out and looking at ways that we can assist these single-family homes or single-parent homes because they face particularly challenging situations, and find ways that we can perhaps ease their burden and help these kids succeed because really, they are an extremely high-risk group. really they are an extremely high-risk group. And given that, certainly becoming more of a focus of what, as I go through looking at graduation and all of these statistics, you know, how can we, how can we help change these? I think that's an area where we can make a huge impact. So certainly, I appreciate all the efforts that already are being done in the school district. I know a lot of people are doing a lot of great things and that's an area where I'm, I've been spending my time doing some research and trying to, trying to learn more because I think it's an area we can make a big difference in, helping the students in our district. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Micah, you're up.
Yeah, so I, over the last couple of weeks, I think I've visited 12 or 15 schools. I love visiting schools, obviously. I think one of the neat things is that I get to meet people. Like Jeff here, for example, I mean, I've met him multiple times now and now we're kind of, and matter of fact, he gave me a hamburger at, which is good stuff. And, I mean, so, so I really appreciate that. And then as that happens, I think that people feel more and more comfortable coming out and speaking to us. And I think that's really important because we just need to hear from people and that's really, really an important part of what we do. What, Josh, that, I wasn't going to talk about this, but that was me. And I've been beating that drum for a long time. It is the number one statistic of success and failure is, is fatherless homes. And so that is something that we definitely need to get a, need to get a grip on. Um, yeah, welcome Diego and Annie. I always, Diego, I shouldn't say this now, but I always, I see you writing things down. I love that about you. You probably can use a table though if you want to do, but wherever you want is good. I'm really excited to work with you, Annie. We're excited about that and for a good, to a good year. That's it.
So I, let's see, I got to seven open houses and I, if you haven't been to Hawthorne's open house, you need to find out and go. It's a, it's a concert for the first 15 minutes and it is, it is phenomenal.
Like an instant concert.
They do a great job, so kudos to Hawthorne. That was, you know, the open houses are a great time to get out and really it's just about meeting community members as well as just encouraging our staff to have a great year and talking to them. You know, they, they work so hard and so just, you know. Spoke to some community members regarding the Family Navigator Program. Had a couple of conversations with staff members over the last few days, just on some first-week stuff, just questions. I recently did a podcast with, I was invited to do a podcast with Sammy Byrd and I just want to clarify, and I don't know if you guys were asked this question, but I know it was, it was asked. When we do, you know, stuff like this, obviously, we're speaking on our own free will. We're not speaking on behalf of the board. So just to make you guys aware, 50 seconds into the podcast, Sammy states. And just to be clear to everyone listening in, Gabe is not here in an official capacity. He is here as a citizen and a friend of the podcast, so I just want to make you guys, if anybody asks you, it was, I was there, not in any official capacity. And then lastly, I was recently invited again to be a guest panelist at the Pacific Research Institute Conference, which will be held in Spokane prior to WASDA. I will be a panelist on, the topic is legislation, legislation to expect from Olympia and how to respond. That panel is actually with Representative Jim Walsh and Julie Barrett, co-founder of Conservative Ladies of Washington. And I think the idea was they have a rep, a parent and a board member and they're going to discuss about all of that. I look forward to doing that again. And that's all I have. All right. I'm gonna kind of maybe start with a little curve ball. I'm actually gonna motion that we move the unfinished business, Family Navigator Program and Communities and Schools up before reports and discussions. I think, obviously, we have a lot of people here probably waiting for that presentation, that discussion. So I'm gonna make a motion to move that up next before reports and discussions. Annie, if you wouldn't mind calling for a real call vote so we can amend the, Jim?
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Go.
Making sure Brittany will be gone the entire?
Yes. Brittany will not be in attendance. All right, so next up then, we will, we will be jumping into nine unfinished business, Family Navigator Program and Communities and Schools.
Okay, so at the August board meeting, information, the board had requested information about the Family School Navigator Program in the Port Angeles School District and information about our current model, which includes communities and schools. And then following the presentation, the board requested some more information regarding the feasibility of shifting, potentially shifting, the CIS contracted services to an in-house model. And of course, earlier this evening, the board held a study session with CIS leadership. The executive director and associate director were here to present information and answer questions and have dialogue with the board. So this part, this presentation is a real brief recap of some of the information that was shared at the last board meeting and then some additional feasibility information that I can now supplement even more with some of the information that was shared during the study session tonight. So I'm just going to quickly recap, when it comes to this topic, it really covers all of our strategic goals. As I said, I just want to do a real brief recap of what was shared in August and then shift to the new information that I put together for this evening and then provide lots of opportunity for board discussion and direction. So as I said, the board had attended, board members had attended a session at the WASDA conference, I believe, about the Port Angeles model. And so first, you know, when it comes to this whole topic of family and student support, these, these are, you know, this is what we want to do. We want to provide that direct and individualized support to help that, help ensure our students are thriving and succeeding academically. We want to partner with families to help access resources and ensure that basic needs are being met so students can better engage in schools and we can better partner with families and really empower families and students to navigate the school system and community systems to reduce any barriers that are in place. So the model, shared a little bit about the model as far as I knew about it and what I learned that Port Angeles has. Won't recap all of that, but board members also talked about what they had learned from the, from the session at WASDA, et cetera, and looked at some testimonials about that program in Port Angeles. And the board had, what I shared with the board is we do have a current model in our district of providing this student and family support. And, you know, as I kind of look at the whole big picture, first of all, and I'll dig into this a little bit more tonight, but these programs, this model is primarily funded through Title and LAP, which are supplemental, they're not, it's not basic education funding, it's supplemental, additional funding. And so kind of gets into maybe some of the things that you were raising, Dr. Miller, during the study session about core business, you know, or is this kind of core to our function? So from a funding perspective, and I'll, like I said, I'll dig in a little bit more, but funding, it's not part of basic ed funding. It's additional supplemental targeted funding that we get either, it's federal funding, it's funded through the state, or it's state funding. But in terms of this, like, we have district employees and the district-based services who provide some of these functions and all of those people and positions are listed here. And then district employees, we have success coordinators and migrant counselors and graduation specialists that are school-based. And when it comes to contracted services, of course, we have the contract with communities and schools and there are 11 student support coordinators in our schools providing school-based support. We, board wanted to talk a little bit about in-house versus contracted services. I spoke to the fact that, you know, for example, we use Sidexo. Sidexo is our nutrition services provider. Food, food service is definitely part of our core business and that is something that we work with a contractor. Like, we don't provide that in-house. It's a contracted services model. And of course, there's pros and cons to in-house and contracted services just in general. When there's in-house services, there's just more direct control over that. The people are district employees. There's potentially more opportunities for integration. However, there's also subject matter expertise and cost considerations and flexibility and staffing considerations that are benefits of a contracted service. So just taking Sidexo as an example, they've, they've got it down when it comes to nutrition services and it's a more cost-effective, efficient, better model for us to work with them than to try to replicate that or do that in-house without that expertise. So that was all the information that was provided at the last meeting and the board then asked for some more kind of actual feasibility. What would the feasibility cost and time and what would it take and all those kinds of things? So I want to start this part of the presentation by just highlighting again, like, where does the money for this family and student support come from? Now, of course, our basic ed funding covers people, lots of people who provide student and family support. School administrators, teachers, school counselors, all that's part of basic ed funding. But we don't, that basic ed funding doesn't kind of cover whether you call it supplemental or ancillary, kind of the, you know, more of the maybe wraparound kind of services, specialized service that's targeted, you know, based on need. So we have supplemental staffing allocations that we receive as a school district. We get state funding, it's Learning Assistance Program funding, there's, it's called LAP, LAP High Poverty, also bilingual migrant and Title I. And, and Title I is really focused on mitigating the effects of poverty. So depending on income levels and data and that kind of thing, that drives these funding streams that are above and beyond basic ed. So right now, in our system, all schools except for Mid-Columbia Partnership, the parent partnership, they receive some supplemental funding through LAP, LAP High Poverty, bilingual, migrant and/or Title I. Each year, so we have a Learning Supports and Programs Department. It's a department within the overall teaching and learning department. They really analyze our funding streams and determine what the allocations are to buildings. Some of the money has to go directly to the building. It's, you know, generating that additional funding stream and then some of this funding has a little more flexibility. Priority, though, in all of this is given to schools with lower achievement and higher poverty. And so how it works currently is that principals work in consultation and collaboration with our administrators and learning supports and programs and they determine how to use that supplemental funding to best meet the needs of students in their individual building. We provide a menu of options saying these are the allowable kind of staffing positions because we want to have some uniformity. We want to have support from the district office, so it's not just everybody recreating, creating their own wheel out at the schools. Want to have kind of a district system-wide approach. Those schools can choose from, when it comes to positions, so there's money for professional learning and things like that, but when it comes to positions, people work in the schools, this is a list of those allowable positions. So we have what we call multi-tiered, multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS facilitators. There's parent educators, communities and schools support coordinators are on that list, migrant graduation specialists, my link, excuse me, multilingual facilitators and success coordinators. And just real quick, and then we've got like a description of what do each, what, what are the rules responsibilities of each of those positions?
Just really quick, is, is that, that is just the district has said these are allowable positions or is that by state law or federal law?
No, we've done it as a district. And as I said, what we, what we want is, you know, we have to have, we just don't want every, each individual building kind of creating their own model. We want to be able to.
Uniformity.
Yeah, and support it from the district.
Then one other quick question. The learning supports, so the money that we receive from LAP funding and federal and state funding, that all comes in a, essentially a bundle of money. Then the Learning Supports and Programs Department, then, which is a department within us, KSD, we divvy that up, is that correctly?
Not, not exactly, and I might ask for Alyssa to come up and just help me with this because it depends on the funding stream. So some of it, it's essentially, like, we're facilitating, like, it flows through the district, but directly to the school.
Some is tied to a specific school, some of it we have flexible.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that's a good number.
That's good, okay.
I was curious, part of what I was curious is just how flexible is that money? Some is tied to a specific school, some is flexible.
Correct. Okay, so again, we have this menu of allowable positions. So that's, that's how, that's how like CIS currently fits into our current model. And so you can see, and I will read all this to you and you know, different people have different functions. So there's work to be done to go, okay, what's, what, what do we need most at our school? And which position do, are we going to fund? Which positions are we going to fund with the money available? So currently, when it comes to just the CIS part of this larger model, we have these 11 schools that are, that have a CIS person as part of their model at the school. These are LAP High Poverty-funded positions, or this contract, I should say, is LAP High Poverty-funded, and the total cost to the district is $661,000.
To be clear on that, though, we had budget discussion. This really isn't, fix here, this really isn't part of the budget per se in the sense that the 660 is.
This is in general fund money.
It's, yeah, there's not much we can, it's.
That's correct. Yeah, yeah.
This is apart from the budget.
Right. That's right.
This is unaffected by the budget.
Yes, I mean, it's a different, I mean, it is money. It's real money.
It's a different.
But it's not our general fund and we couldn't take this money and say, let's do something else with it.
This has to be used.
It's supplemental. You can't use this money to supplant like basics education functions.
Can't pay a teacher.
Exactly. I mean, some of these are certificated additional positions. But you couldn't, right, take this and supplant any money.
What's that?
Yeah, not, yes.
You couldn't, you couldn't use this for general education.
Oh, like supplement. Okay, so in looking at, you asked the question about sort of feasibility of an in-house model. From a cost perspective, we just, you know, we did a little bit of work to say, okay, what would, with that same-ish amount of money, the $660,000, what, what could we create in the district? So when it looks at like non-certificated positions, right, like where we would look at people who have a degree or equivalent experience, an off-schedule type salary schedule, it would be, you know, like a position that would pay between $23,000 and $26,000 per hour, depending on experience. We, we costed out like an eight-hour day, 189 days. Of course, we're looking, we have to factor in things like benefits and all of our employees. So this is what it would look like for us to do that for 11 positions. Now, what I didn't factor into this side of the equation is some of the information that was shared during the study sessions. So during the study session, you know, there was, there's data shown around like the backbone support, the donations. I didn't account for any of that. So this is just, just to fund 11. You know, I did see that the information that was shared tonight, the salary range of the positions for CIS, that salary range is $50 to $30 per hour. So if, if, you know, we would have to re-cost it out, pay similar wage, it would cost us more. So that's just speaking to some of the information that's shared tonight. And this doesn't account for management of the group or anything like that, just plainly the positions. There's been a question, I think, in past meetings about, well, you know, would it be possible for us to go the like certificated social? for us to go the like certificated, like have school social work? And there is, you know, the state does talk about like, there are such things as school social worker. That would be a person, a master of social worker, an MSW. Those people would be on our certificated salary schedule. So that's like $74,000 to $109,800, depending on experience, you know, following our certificated salary schedule. And they would follow that work calendar. You know, to go that route, to pay for 11 positions, it would cost us $1.6 million. So it's like way outside of what the current cost is. The other cost factor that was shared during the study session tonight at the end was that $200,000 offset. So, you know, I didn't obviously count for that, I didn't have that information. But the board heard CIS share that they could retract by $200,000 a year for the next two years.
$100,000 a year for two years.
I'm sorry, $100,000 a year, $200,000 total, yeah, $100,000 a year. So, you know, if, if we were going to implement an in-house model, in terms of feasibility, all I did at this point was say sort of like, what would we need to do? Obviously, we would need to provide notice to communities and schools because there's a contract. We would need to determine where, you know, where does this function live in our organization? It would live in the learning supports and programs. So we'd have to figure out like administrative oversight of these all and what that would look like. I think we would need to develop program goals and intended outcomes. I know that that's something that the board has focused on, right? We want to be really clear about what our goals and outcomes are and determine the data collection and evaluation systems, develop those job postings, recruit, hire and train. So, I mean, it's not something that could be done overnight, obviously. And, and I just want to be transparent, you know, there's some things that were talked about in the study session tonight that, in terms of that fund, the fundraising, the grant writing, like the backbone organization does. It's not like the people in the schools, right? And so we would have to figure all of that out, too. So that's the information that I have to share. The other thing is, I think, I kind of spoke to it, but I know, Dr. Miller, you know, is it a core business strategy? You know, it's, it's, from a funding perspective, the state wouldn't say so. Because this, all of this is not basic education funding. So the first part of the study session, you really talked about full fund, you know, the full funding for education. So I would say right now, from a state funding perspective, this is not part of basic education because it's not funded. It's, so, I'm not saying it's not important, I'm not saying it's not critical and needed. It absolutely is. But from a funding stream, we don't get basic ed funding to do it.
I don't know if I'm talking about, I mean, I'd say the same for athletics. Athletics aren't, I think athletics are part of our core business. Athletic, athletics, very much part of high school core business. Having, that's what I'm saying, is this something that is fundamental, fundamental to what we do? Use SODEX for example. Families can provide their own food at school, kids can bring their own lunch. There's a lot of kids in high school go out for lunch. Food isn't a core part of our business. Not anything that we say, yes, it's important.
From a funding perspective, it is, right?
It's important, but, but there are so many other avenues that come by food for the kids. They can do it from home, they can go out to eat. So that's why I'm saying, I don't, and I'm still trying, to be honest, I'm still trying to decide. Because to me, part of the issue is, especially as we'll get into some of these later things, where we look at our outcomes. Incredibly concerning to me because the outcomes, some areas, we really struggle. And I think some of that struggle, not all of it, but some of that struggle ties very closely into what we're, and it's issues. Focusing on academics, we've got a lot of issues there. And that's where, I guess, my concern comes. What are we doing, the question I have is, is what are we doing right now in schools that don't have CIS? So for example, let's use Kamaiakin, Ketterick High School uses CIS. What does Kamaiakin in Southridge do? No, they're not on the school. Or Southridge, excuse me, Kamaiakin does not, Kamaiakin is not. What does Kamaiakin do?
And I think, to be fair, right, it's, a lot of this is tied to funding. So they, they can do, and we heard people speak to it during public comment. I mean, we have, we have school employees that have a job to do, our teachers, our counselors, right? And like, they don't have the capacity within their day to do some of these other things that are super helpful and critical and needed, but it's not part of their core duties and responsibilities. So if, if we want that to be met, it has to get funded and somebody has to do it.
Somebody has to pay for it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Park Elementary.
Park, Park Middle School would be a good example.
Yes, so no, they do get quite, I mean, there are titles. So one of the decisions, right, like there's a decision point because they can't, of what's the, what does that school believe? The school administration, in consultation with our Learning Supports and Programs administrators, what's, based on their data, what do they need the most? And so that's when there's, unfortunately, there's not enough funding, right, to do everything and have all of the people and positions on this list. So it's got to be some prioritizing. And so some, some schools are choosing, right, well, let's have a success coordinator and paraeducator or, and multi, you know, MTSS learning facilitator and not have a community system person. And unfortunately, like then they're not benefiting from that.
Do you have any way of comparing outcomes? I know that's really challenging.
Yeah, you know, I mean, sure, I mean, we could line up the schools and say, you know, here's the outcomes, but I don't know if I could make a correlation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah.
We may be comparing apples and oranges.
Right.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there a way to compare what's being done at those that don't have CIS and those that do in reaching these under populations?
I mean, there's, if you look at what, what the people on this list do, there's some overlap, you know, a little, not redundancy, I wouldn't say that, but some overlap. And counselors, you know, so counselors will pick up things and try to do things. I mean, I think that they're, those schools are doing the best that they can with what they have. But there's, but clearly, if you have a person, right, whose role is to do the things that are listed here, it's, it's going to get addressed. Or then if you don't have somebody.
So Park's going to be doing some things better and, you know, I guess we'll do other things.
Because Park has people, they've just decided to allocate people to something else, yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have a community-
Right, they don't have a community schools person, but they, they decided to.
They have some other people, different people. Right, and they do get quite a bit of funding because they're a higher poverty.
You said different funding, so does each, so each school, each school then has a set amount of, so like they'll say, okay, Park, you get $100,000 of Title I and then, oh, you get $80,000. Like, schools have different levels of funding like that?
Correct, and it's not so much what they, like, that we say what they get. There's this whole formula and rank ordering of school based on poverty. And my friend Alyssa here can speak to it with a little more detail potentially than I can, so.
Very complicated. I'll try to not make it confusing, but we do, for our title allocations, we, we have to do a rank. So I'm going to say names, I don't know the, I don't have it memorized because it changed a little this year. But if Park is our most impacted school, they have to get more funding per student, per pupil than Amistad. And there's all these rules that come into play with that ranking. So each, it's not a set amount that's equal.
And we do, I can send you as a, we have a sheet, right, that explains that rank order. I can follow that.
And it's analyzed every year, data.
What else?
I guess part of my concern here, and again, we're going to get into it later, we're looking at our outcomes. What we're doing, I guess my concern right, doing right now, good. I think CIS is doing great work, but, but the scope is way big. When you're looking at our scores, you're looking at percentages in the twenties, efficiency. I guess that's why I say we've got to do something different. Not, we are, we are, we're not there. We're not, we're not moving it enough. And quite frankly, like I mentioned, it might be that, look, we take money from other areas, shift it into this because we're looking at a math percentage of 20% being a grade level. That's, that means 80% of our kids off. That's concerning. And so I guess that's why I look at it and I say, it's not that I don't think CIS is doing great work, it's just that it's not big enough. We've, we've got to capture these kids better because I suspect if we dug into these numbers even more, we will find that a large percentage of that 80%, somebody mentioned 59%, I think, of the kids that are from lower poverty, or lower income or poverty homes. I suspect a large portion of that, 80% of kids that are failing are coming from that population because they don't have the infrastructure at home or other areas. And that's where I'm concerned because our system is not, not helping those kids succeed. And that, that's where my concern is. Like I said, I'm actually looking at this, my opinion has changed from where it was five months ago, where I was concerned more about budget issues. I'm looking at it now going, this isn't just, heck, this is way bigger than our, trying to keep it in. I mean, this is, this is, this may be our biggest concern as I look at my big thing and say, we've got to get kids ready for post-life and beyond graduation. These kids never get, they're by fifth grade, 80% of them can't do basic math. We're never going to get them ready for after college or after high school.
And just one little, one, one little, couple of things I just want to add to the conversation. One, OSPI earlier this week, because all the test scores now, the state test scores are now live on the OSPI report card site, actually did a really good kind of one-page document that explains a little bit more what a Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4 score on the State Smarter Balanced Assessment actually means. And I don't know if we're going to have time to dig into that too much tonight, but I'll certainly follow up with that because it just helps, it's, because sometimes you can look at those scores and go, oh, gosh, if 20, only 20% of the students met standard, that means they can't do grade level math. And, and it's not that simple to look at that metric and, and say that that's what it means. Not saying those are great scores by any stretch of the imagination, that's not what I'm saying. But I just want, we'll, we'll get into a little bit more of that, just to provide. And then on the other side of things, I think, you know, this has long been an area of recognition, I think, that, that this kind of support is, is critical to provide in our schools and to see how can we maximize funding within all of the rules that we have that come with all these different funding streams. You know, when I first joined the district, right, the board, we, we had, I think, communities and schools in nine of our schools. And the direction from the board, to me as superintendent, was we want to expand this. We want to have more communities and schools. And so we did a lot of work over the course of the last several years, you know, to, to, to build that up. So it's now at 11. And it's still a matter, there's a little bit of like, how much funding is there? How much capacity is there? All of that, but like, I think it's, it's, I don't think anybody's arguing, right, that it's, it's, I don't think, I don't even think board members, any board members are saying that, like, there's not need there for our students that has to get met in some way.
I think, I think the issue is, is what's the best way of better capturing these students? Helping them, helping them move forward. Like I said, my concern is, is even, yeah, I appreciate you explaining, we'll get into some of these numbers, but numbers are incredibly concerning to me. And again, when I look at the popul, the causes of why our numbers may go, I think a lot of it may be that the structure is struggling in certain areas, possibly, I've said enough.
Josh, if I can jump in here, Dave, if that's all right?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
So my understanding about how these students are getting the help is the teacher is recommending that they speak to them, a parent or their self, self-report is like, hey, I need help. Those are the three, three ways that they're getting help. Now, that's my takeaway from our study sessions, that they're averaging 47 students per school. And it sounds like they have room to take on more kids at this point. You guys, am I regurgitating this correctly? I just want to make sure I'm, I'm saying that right. So totally understand what Josh is saying because we want to get the kids help. So the question is, I don't think it's communities and schools. I think it's, we need to find a way to make sure these kids, whether the teachers are pushing them, whether the parents are reaching out or administrators, yeah, how are we capturing these kids and making sure they're getting the help that they need? And again, looking at communities and schools, when we have, you know, two on their staff with masters in social work, they've got all these years of, they've got all this stuff that we cannot replicate for the same dollars. There is no way on God's green earth we can do it for the same dough. Or have the fundraising, or have the, now the offer of $200,000. I mean, we just, we financially cannot do it. We, as board members, have to remember is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure that what we're doing makes financial sense. So with that, and to further Josh's concern, it's like, okay, we know we've got this need, we know these kids need the help. So maybe it's not the fact that, maybe it's not because of schools, how do we change this? Like, look, how do we empower our teachers to recommend more kids into this program? How do we change this narrative to make sure that we're now maximizing this? I mean, I'd love to max out here, people at the school say, wait, timeout, I can't do 65 kids. Great, now we know what the threshold is. But to me, this is about taking what's being offered and making sure that we're, that they know that those services are there. And how do we, how do we change that paradigm in order to really maxim, you know, maximize?
Michael, what do you?
Do you, do you feel good about, do you feel confident that in a year's time or something that you, that the school district could replicate the holes or fill the holes, I guess, since we didn't move to a navigator, this navigator program, like the school could?
There's, there's, I guess, a couple of things that are going through my mind, to be honest with you, right? Like, I'm not going to be in a year from now, right? So I don't want to over-promise and under-deliver in that area and leave something for somebody else, right? Like, that's just something that's been going through my head a little bit as we've been talking tonight.
Fair.
You know, we can, we, we're, we're pretty amazing people here in the district. And when the board says, you know, we want something done, we, we get it done.
That's been my experience.
I, I'll, I'll be honest, you know, did I get a little, like, during the study session tonight when they were going through all of the backbone and the resources and things, I'll be honest, I got, I started to go, hey, well, may, you know, it's one thing, it's one thing to, if it was, could we, could we-
Hire people.
Could we do that, this, right? We could, I think we could do this. Could we replicate in that amount of time the fundraising part, the grant writing, the partnerships, right, like all of that? I, I get a little pit in my stomach thinking I'm saying, yes, we could do that. And then a year from now, somebody else is standing here left with, like, that didn't, that's not, that didn't happen, right? I, that's the part that, I'll be honest, I don't think we could do.
Yes, to me, the bigger question, having heard that, so you could, you could get a, bigger question is, do you think within three to five years, you have a potentially, what is the likely-
what is the likelihood that you would have an organization that perhaps could better reach the children or could reach a greater number of children? Could you even give me that? Is that, that just?
I don't think I could answer that question. I really, I really don't. I wish I could, I don't.
Do we have somebody in the, in the, I know, I know we've looked for grants before, I know that's something, do you have somebody who could look?
We don't have, I mean, so now we're talking about basic ed kind of stuff, like, we don't have a grant writer, right? Like, we, that's, that falls on people here, we don't have the, there's not a somebody. So I think it would be, we would probably need to hire somebody to do that. Yes, we apply for the state grants that are sort of entitlement grants and things like that, but we don't have somebody out, payment and getting in additional funding, you know? And so I think that you, I think somebody would need to be hired to, to do that.
I already know the answer to this question, but I just wanted you to answer it. Can a current CIS coordinator apply for, we did go this direction, could a current CIS coordinator apply for the job here?
Well, of course they could, and we've hired former, you know, CIS coordinators to do different jobs.
Teachers and everything, yeah.
But, but one thing, you know, like, we got this information to, tonight at the study session, I think that they, that communities and schools has recently increased their rate for people. So like, right now, based on the information shared, where did I see it? Where it says that the range is twenty-eight fifty to thirty-one dollars per hour, what we costed out was the twenty-three forty-four to twenty-six sixty-nine per hour. So, like, why would somebody, you know, I don't, I don't know why would somebody apply for a position that paid a lower rate?
Yeah.
These are all the things that are going through my mind.
Yeah, so, so I think, I think our, I think the board's goal, I mean, I don't want to speak to everybody, but I think this is probably a safe thing to say, is our goal is to improve, right? Our goal is to improve and to make it better and to make everything better. It's not to, not to go backwards, it's to make things better, better for the kids, serve more kids. So I think that's the, we're looking at through that lens, and I think we're all on the same page. For me personally, I have, you know, for me personally, there, there's boxes that I feel like I need checked, right? And there's some boxes that I know CIS will not check, and there's some boxes that I know they will. And so that's where I, where I grapple, because I feel like it's, it's not checking the boxes that I personally want checked. And, and the other thing is, like, again, like I said this in our, our previous meeting, you just mentioned that there's new information you just kind of thought about and got, and I feel like the same thing. Why is that coming now? Like, I, I feel like if I'm just being perfectly honest, like, like, the, the gathering of information wasn't, wasn't thorough necessarily, and, and, you know, I mean, I, I kind of feel like it was, I don't want to say this nicely, but like, almost like disrespected in a way, you know? Like, like, you're not worth it to, to put my time into giving this for you, you know? And then, and then writing letters and things, I, I just don't think, I, I don't like that stuff. And, and so, and, and I, and that, on a district level, that wouldn't happen. That wouldn't happen. I think we'd have more collaboration, more communication, hey, you know, I don't, we don't like this, can you, you know? And so that's, that's kind of where I stand.
Just one thing on the partnership piece and the managing the partnership. I mean, a partnership is a relationship and it's, there's, you know, it's, it's two entities, right? So I think about other partnerships like CIDEXO, like the Mid-Columbus Children's Reading Foundation, and, and sort of the status quo has always, has been, you know, that that entity comes annually and, and kind of presents information to the board. And that's been sort of our cadence and pattern. And if, I, I want to take some ownership, if the board has felt like that there was information requested or, you know, that, 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 that's, that, maybe that was me not understanding what it is you were looking for or wanting. So, anyway.
I guess as I look at this, one, give more information, I would like to hear Brittany's point on. My suggestion tonight is we don't need. Really want to get Brittany's point on this, she'll provide, and also, I, I'd really like to meet with you, here's one-on-one, where I can ask, like, we can look more, I want to see detail what some of these other places are doing and how successful. Maybe even sit down with some of the different positions here, sorry, I just got off. But sit down and talk to some of these positions, because, again, part, part of where I lean is, is that I say, look, if, if we want different results, we have to do something dramatically different. We have to change. Can't keep doing the same thing over and over again and suddenly expect that our results are going to change dramatically. So I have to ask myself, how are we going to change? And, and the question is, is perhaps maybe the, the answer is, is we align ourselves more closely with an organization like CIS, but maybe it's, we need to do it in-house. Again, business perspective, a lot of times, this is something that is super important to an organization, and you've got to do it. You can't give it to somebody else. That, that's, but there are situations where the expertise is beyond what we can get in and you're forced to go look at it. So I, I guess this is, this is a big enough, like I said, of all of the things I've been sitting here over the summer working on, trying to figure out how we can actually change the dial of really dramatic differences in our school, as I've looked at things with how they've gotten different results with kids reading and things, those lines. We got to do something different. I don't know what the answer is yet. Maybe why I say, let's table the discussion for today so we can get more information. Looking at other, we got to look bigger now, because I really feel like this is where we can make a huge difference in this country. We could get these kids that are not being captured. CIS is capturing five hundred of them. That is just a drop in the bucket, it looks like. So, you know, to Mike's point, how can we capture more of these kids? And I, I don't know right now, whether it's, you know, doing the partnership, or doing it on our own, or finding another model, I don't know. I know what we're doing right now isn't enough. That is the one thing, and you guys may disagree with me, but that is the one thing I know, is whatever we're doing is not enough because we've got amazing people in our district. This is not a teacher problem, in my mind. The comment, the gentleman made, five years of great teachers. I think we have five years of great. It is a far bigger problem than that. That's why, I guess I said, we got to look at something different, because I don't think it's the personnel, don't think it's the leadership, I think there's more fundamental issues, and I don't know if we.
If I may, Othello's doing something, and I don't know what it is, but I read a, a program about what Othello's doing, their, their test scores have jumped up dramatically the last couple of years. So I would encourage you, and I, I wish, I, I wish, I should have brought the, the story with me, but they, they have done a really elicited view, they, anyway, they, I read a story, their, their test scores and their, everything about their score this year has gone up dramatically the last couple of years. I would suggest we reach out to the superintendent of Othello and see what they're doing, specifically the elementary level, where they have had a great deal of success. As extent of my knowledge on that, but I would encourage someone smarter than me to go reach out to them. So, and again, but I'm, I'm with, with Josh here, if you guys want to table this, let's put it aside and put it on the road, because what I have right now is working. Again, I would encourage, encourage the administration, the teachers to, if you see kids that are struggling even a little bit, last way to, to push them towards the CIS and the now stuff so we can get these kids moving.
If I'd be able to meet with some of these, I want to get their, with the people that you've heard CIS, I've, I've had with them hours. Do what the others.
Yes, absolutely. And I just want to say, it's, it's not necessarily like an either or, right?
Right.
Like, because, because all of these people fulfill different functions.
Yes, no, I get it. Like, what I'm saying is, is I want to see what's going on. They were really good about stepping me through what their, what their coordinator understanding. What are they doing? Because gaps need to be filled. Somebody is, is somebody fulfilling it? Who else taking on that?
Yeah, so I, I'll just quickly chime in, I'm, I'm fine. Table it, Brittany's here, I think. Question to, I will say, personally, after sitting through presentation today, I mean, that's just more information, I've gone in three years of presentations, and I know we've had, and I know we've, I specifically asked for, by charts, back, guys were all in that, didn't even know what, how it worked. Tonight's information provides, provides a lot of those answers, I think, to some of those questions, where in the past three years, answers to questions, so I'm, I'm fine with tableing it to have a discussion with Brittany, I don't think any, based on the information, I, they. Discussion too, I believe the best course of action.
Yeah, I'd say just.
Bring it, bring it back to the.
This, I think.
All right. We will, we will move it again to next agenda, and we will again, put it first again on agenda, so we don't have to keep people tight. That, so, thank you. Comments? Let's take a, we'll take a five-minute break before we jump on to reports and discussions. All right, we will call the meeting back to order. And we are going to get started with reports and discussions, we're starting first with the twenty-eight, twenty-four, twenty-five strategic plan, objectives, performance indicators, targets, and equity statement. I will double back and ask, Dr. Pierce, you mentioned you follow up on some of the reporting stuff for us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we.
Yes, there's some new information that came out this, and the OSPI held a webinar just to help, there's some one pager information, I will follow up with you.
This is, just, I'm trying to understand, this, they changed how they label things, right? So now it's not meeting grade standards, it's students on track for college-level learning without needing review passes?
Yep.
Yeah, I'd love to hear a little bit.
And I don't know how much time we'll have for it tonight, maybe touch on it?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, and can you, just a link?
I sure will.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because the, the information I got was the scores in the state drastically jumped seventy percent and sixty-some percent with changing definitions. All right.
Like I said, it's like hot off the presses on it. Okay. All right, strategic plan, so each year we complete a process of reviewing our data, determining needs, seeking board priorities, and developing our objectives for the year. In addition, throughout the year and at the June retreat, board members provide feedback direction regarding updates to performance indicators and targets. So these objectives and performance indicators and targets are being presented for formal board approval tonight, board has seen them numerous times. In addition, there's been a proposed update to the commitment to equity statement, which is shown on the strategic plan. So there's three options being presented for information based on the, that was provided. Okay, so, starting with the objectives, I just, again, want to highlight that we have a pretty defined process of reviewing our data, including all of our staff and family survey results, our academic achievement data, other organizational data to determine our needs. We look at new laws that are passed, new requirements that are coming down from the state and so forth, and we seek input from our team, input and direction from the board. And then all of this is drafted and finalized by my team and me. We review it with the board in August and then tonight, speak that formal. On the objectives, you all have seen these pages. Every year, you know, our goals remain the same as, as the school district, and then we update the objectives or the work that we're doing in the year ahead connected to our goal. I won't read all of these to you, but I do want to just highlight a couple things, because of course you've seen them, but this is the year we're going to be expanding our safety officer program, that's the levy-funded program, right, that provides the full-time safety officer to each of our elementary campuses. So we're working toward expanding that, so the goal is by the end of the year, we'll have a full-time, one full-time person at each elementary campus. Another thing that we've talked about in the past is really looking at our approach, our district-wide approach to social emotional learning, developing some uniform expectations and some miserable outcomes. That's on our objectives for this year as well. And then I wanted to just highlight this, this objective to expand the role of our student board representative and representative-elect, and, and kind of how engaging with the members of the superintendent advisory council. And, you know, Annie touched on it a little bit, but part of the process we did today with the students was to seek their input about things that they, they want to talk about, but also to share with them, here's some work that we're doing this year, and we need your input on this work. As I go through the presentation, I'm going to highlight some of those things that we have scheduled in to get feedback from this advisory group for the year. Okay, when it comes to our goal of all students are engaged learners, this is the year we're evaluating our literacy materials, instructional materials, and gearing up for an adoption of new K-five literacy materials, and we're implementing our new math instructional materials. And what you're going to see is a little bit of data, some data from the pilot of those materials and some of the results that, early results we're seeing from that pilot. You'll see that in Alyssa's. We're also looking, this has been talked about at the board level a couple of times, really looking at our ed tech standards for K-12, how we're teaching and assessing digital literacy and media literacy across the system. When it comes to all students are ready for their future, this is a big one, right? We talk about it all the time, but, which we should, right? We'll be completing that feasibility study to really look at, are there ways to potentially expand opportunities for high school students to take additional coursework, credit at the high school level? That's, this will be, you know, back to the conversation about financial literacy and computer competency as well as other areas. Also, just looking at how do we, and this was a topic that we had at the, I'll just call it SAC, that's what we call it, Superintendent Student Advisory Council, at a SAC meeting today, we got some, we sought some specific information from students that Robin had put together to, to get their input on like the family hub and what do parents need, and, and also, you know, we talked about that, how are we developing some tools and materials that are helping engage families more in these processes? And it was really fascinating to hear from students about what questions their parents ask them and what information students believe their families need. When it comes to our family-focused goal, you're going to hear about this a little bit tonight, but the parental tool, web filtering and status of that, I already just touched on this, that communications piece, but Robin's going to be forming a communication advisory of, you know, parents to seek some input. So once we develop some of those family hub resources, videos or tools, to get input from a, a group of families to help inform the work moving. So, that's work on the list. A, a big one for us is professional learning communities, you'll talk, you'll hear a little bit from Alyssa tonight, but that is one of the strategies we are investing in and seeing results, because if teachers can get really clear on standards and analyzing that data and using data to inform instruction and working collaboratively with their teachers, that helps with improved teaching and learning. And when it comes to our, our goal of all community collaborators, you know, the board, we, every year talk about volunteering and patient and wanting to get community engagement in our schools and volunteers, so continuing to work on that. Finally, that enrollment study is, we're getting that launched and underway, we talked about it in the study session. We talked about it in the study session in spring. To really look at what we're seeing in those. Trends. And what we can learn from that study and it's not a, it's not a bond in, or levy year this year, but it's always. It's always a levy year because, uh, always have to be looking and, and planning for the next levy, so. Our E P and O and tech levies expire in twenty twenty six, so just. That continued preliminary planning for what are we going to, um, you know. Need from. Those levies to maintain and potentially expand programs. And then, uh, bond would follow sometime after that, but you remember in the spring. Ian Jones was here along with Vic to present the, uh, work for the facility executive committee and what schools next on the list, so the. Okay, quickly on the performance indicators and targets, last year the board went through a process to update. These and really get them all focused on continual growth and progress, so, um, that's. All, all of these indicators and targets are organized by whole area here. Uh, we have just a couple modifications to make sure on some of our surveys, we're breaking the data down, so we're. Not lumping the student feedback and family and staff feedback all into one, but we're really differentiating between three. We've got those level. Specific student growth and proficiency targets. We're fully implementing STAR this year, so you'll see math isn't on there anymore, but STAR or the smarter balanced assessment. Or the, um, science state assessment. And, and so the board's already seen all of these. Changes, um. Looking at both the four and five year graduation rate. And our multilingual learner growth and proficiency. And then we made a couple, uh, changes in the staff. Full, uh, based on board conversation or some of the targets, just tweaking some of those, so those changes collected here. And. Recommendation, and then we'll get to the equity statement part. The recommendation is that the board approves the twenty four, twenty five strategic objectives and key indicators as presented.
Question? Oh, I just real quick with. The past we've talked, um, you mentioned student reps early on in this. The past, I think we basically touched on it, but I feel like we. Kind of did them a disservice in. Giving that, like having them some. On their time on the board. That's something. It is, or just, yeah, I'd love, I'd love to see you going. Reps like having, whether it's a policy update or something coming from the. I just, I, I mean, I want you to be able to leave here and feel like you've accomplished something, you didn't go up to meetings.
I think there's some opportunity there because, well, Annie and Diego and I met. This week, last week, I don't know, but to, to kind of, to do some preliminary planning for the student advisory council and talked about how we can expand their role there.
Okay.
So like today, they facilitated group discussion, um, which was great, they both did a great job. And then as we look at some of these topics that we're going to be bringing and the topics, like. I, I think about, uh, artificial intelligence is one and the technology standards, that's one where we want to, there's going to be some policy development and we want their voice in that. So there's definitely opportunity for getting, and they, they want to be engaged and we want them to be.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I personally felt like. You guys will walk away with.
London did a pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, I will, uh, take a motion to.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the. Two thousand twenty four to two twenty, thousand twenty five strategic objective and key indicators as proposed.
Annie? Oh, yes, so.
We did talk about that process too about. For the meeting and, and I, I don't, we didn't really talk about any of the agenda items tonight.
We want to ask you for your vote, we don't want to put you on the spot, so.
Going forward, you, you always, you have.
You can, you can yes, you can no, you can ask, abstain. You can have your vote at the beginning at the end.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, the next part is the equity statement, so currently on the strategic plan, there's a commitment to equity statement, um, that was developed, uh, by the board a number of years ago. And I won't read all of the words here, but this is the current commitment to equity statement. Uh, there's been a proposal, Micah. Worth a proposal to update the current statement to a commitment to a quality of opportunity statement. This is the first draft that was in the, um, in the board materials. And then there's, uh, Micah shared an updated draft earlier today. So I put that updated proposal here, uh, and I don't know if you want to speak to it?
Um, sure, sure, um, so I just. So I think that the, the paradigm shift is, um. Uh, equality of opportunity to me means every kid's, uh, starting from the same place. Um, not necessarily ending up at the same place, right? Um, so it's, I think our goal is to start them at the same place and then, uh, foster an environment where they can succeed. Um, at their, you know, they have no cap, right? So, so based on their abilities, based on their efforts, based on their, um, all that kind of stuff, so I think that's, so what this is, it kind of encompasses that sort of slight. Slight change of, slight shift of, of thought, um, to, um, equality of opportunity, making sure everybody starts from the same place. And then focusing on merit and achievements, so, so the kids are, so that, rather than, um, trying, you know. Equity or ending up at the same place where it's focused on merit and, and developing that, that, that thing within each kid that they can succeed and strive and grow and they can do it.
So the assumption is that all these kids are starting from the same place, which they're not.
That's not the assumption.
No, that's just what you said.
Did I?
Did, did I misunderstand?
Uh, I would say you totally misunderstood. Uh, the assumption is not that they start from the same place, that is our job to facilitate an environment where they do start from the same place, recognizing that they do not. And that is our jobs to make sure they all have the equality of opportunity, that is our job to make sure that they have equality of opportunity.
I guess I'm struggling. And the, the.
If they don't have equality of opportunity, if they're not starting from the same place. That's, that, we all believe that, so now our job is to provide resources so that they do start from the same place.
Pierce, this is, there, the other proposal was just the standard.
So I, I, I put in a third just for the board consideration, so that it's, you know, and there could be any hybrid of these or whatever the board decides, but there's the current commitment to equity statement as it currently reads. There's the proposal submitted by Micah.
Yeah, the updated one, there's really just two, that one's.
Well, and then this one, I just wanted to point out there, there is, uh, legal language that we, that we do use and are required to use on job postings. And all sorts of other, like website and in a lot of different places, and it's a non discrimination equity and civil rights statement. And this is like the legal language that we're required to, we're not required to publish it on our strategic plan, that's not what I'm saying, but it is that. It, it, you'll find it on our website, you'll find it on our job postings, um. And we already have this. Right, but it is, you know, so that's just, I thought, I, I just had another thought, if, if for some reason the board doesn't like the current equity statement or, and maybe people don't. Want the proposal you drafted, like this would just be another option for the board.
Looks like some of the wording, maybe in this proposal. Dates brief. Nation.
So did our original statement come from WADA?
No, it was, um, it was. Collaborative effort by board members. With, you know, my help and words.
That, I guess.
I think it was, it was probably in twenty.
Nothing else was going on in twenty twenty.
But that's when, you know, we started the process in twenty nineteen. To really do all of the listening sessions with staff and families and. And all of that feedback and then inform element of, of the strategic plan of the goals and that's when the equity statement was developed and. Yeah, that was the origin.
Some things I like about the stated statement is, is I really do believe all of this is a. This is a collaborative effort. Both the district and students. Students. Get a horse to water, you can't make. Here we're saying, look, we're going to provide, try to provide everybody the same opportunity. And you have an opportunity based on your, your efforts. Um, and we're trying to support student achievement by saying, look, the harder you work, the more you're invested. Great, we want you to succeed and reach your fullest potential. I, I, I really think it's a collaborative effort and something I really like about this statement is it seems to emphasize the collaboration. School district, our job is to have an unwagered commitment by nurturing environment regardless of anything else. Help them have the opportunity to succeed. Everyone should have baseline, that opportunity to excel to the level they are willing to commit. That's, that's why I like this, it focuses on the collaboration. District and the student saying both, both parties have responsibilities. Both parties have expectations they can have, the district will provide a place where each student can succeed. Our obligation. Student's obligation is. Hard to work. I like, so that, that's why I like this, I like how it collaborates between.
You know, also just want to make sure everybody, it's not a, it's not necessarily an either or, right? I mean, you could take aspects of, mash them together however you like, uh. So if there's parts of the current. Of, of the current statement that, that some board members really want to make sure don't get lost and there's parts of this proposed statement that board members really like. Uh, we, you could identify those or if there's parts of the non discrimination equity and civil rights statement that you think should be. Part of it.
Office chair back there.
You know, you can, you, you just need to say what parts of it you like and we can. Craft something that meets everybody's needs.
And I guess if anything I would change, I'd say a commitment to equality of opportunity. A lot of commitment to data. That's really what this is about, right? We're committing ourselves to excellence, we're saying, look, we are going to create an excellent. Size opportunity. Students have the opportunity to commit. Uh, I mean, you can call it equality of opportunity, but that's at the core of what we're trying to say here. He's saying, look. We want to create an excellent environment, we want you to become.
I may ask, what was wrong with our. What is it about it you don't like?
Oh, I don't like the focus on, um, well, I think this is just better and I think that it fits the.
I ask, what about the first one, do you not?
Well, it, it's not necessarily that I, I don't like a bunch of things about it, I just don't feel like it, it really, um, encapsulates the vision. Of where we're going, I feel like this better. Um, this is like the statement that is, of, it's like on every single wall that people read all the time that, that us wants, um, like this, this. This encapsulates our approach more accurately, but it's like the update is needed.
Yes, Mike. Question, although I. But what. Not that I don't like. First statement. Fine, it seems fairly. Fairly non motivational. I don't read this and be like, yeah. It, it seems, for me, we're putting this on our, you know, our strategic goals, really what we're trying to say here is what are we trying to achieve? What is our rally point? That's to me where I feel like this is more of a rally point, because really at the end of the day, that's. Statement that's going on our. Correct?
Well, like there's our, we've got our mission and our vision and our goals that are kind of what we're trying, what we're all about as a school district. You know, that's where we talk about like helping kids reach their fullest, highest potential, all those kind of things. This was, I, you know, maybe a different purpose than the vision, mission and goals.
I mean, because where does it go? The only place I've seen it is. Tells our goals and.
This? This, 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 this.
That's where I've.
Statement is on the, it's on the strategic.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I think the purpose of it was to convey, uh, that this, that what the board, that the board values diversity, recognizes diversity and. You know, what, I, I mean, just all the things that it says, I mean, I don't know, it, I, I think it's just meant to convey all the things.
Yeah, it's just kind of like blah, 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 and then this is, this is like more powerful, more motivational, like this is the direction, this is a.
This isn't our mission statement. Basis stating. That's, that's the whole point, if you guys want to go back and do the admission statement, then that's, that's where your, your motivational deal should be looking at, that's your goal.
Yeah, I think we should do that as well.
So.
So I guess, Mike, to, to answer your, ask you back, what do you love about this statement?
I, again. There, there, there's, there's nothing in there that I love or dislike, I think it, it says exactly what it needs to say. And it's, it's really not something that I think we need to spend a tremendous amount of time talking about, to be honest.
Alright, let's move on.
Very honest.
I just have one really quick thing, would it all be possible to take the current Micah's proposed and then the non discriminatory, um, statement? And send them out in like a survey to the different high schools? I don't know how you guys would lay that out or how, just making this. Out, but then the board members can take that information and then based on. Input from students as well as your guys'?
Take that charge to go do that?
It's possible.
Let me, I, I just want to add one thing that, um. I, when I read this, the one thing I, that jumped out to me is that. Takes a little bit of that discrimination statement already, which we have posted, and it's on our webpage at times. But I thought maybe. I guess the one bird. So I, I thought. Says our mission is to ensure safe, respectful and inclusive education. I mean, that's, it pulls, it pulls in a handful of the stuff from the first one that. If you guys, I mean, it's, yeah, if you guys want to. I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, safe.
Safe inclusive. Safe inclusive.
Equality of opportunity. How it is.
So. Motion if you want. Question.
I move that we adopt this policy, post commitment to quality of community as presented for first and second reading. But.
Not policy.
It's not a policy, it's a, what is it? It's statement.
Commit.
Statement, yeah. Or the statement for.
Motion, any more discussion? Question, Patty, if you will.
Mr. Connors?
No.
Or Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Right? Let's see. All right, next up is the annual K through K-12 student goal report. Melissa St. Hilaris.
Last year on some of those assessments, but really spending more time on what's, what actions have been taken, where are some bright spots and what are. But just a little reminder for the board, we have lots of different pieces of data that we look at. We're going to spend some time right now on smarter balance assessments. Measure how our multi-language learners are progressing in. Development. Might see the. We're also going to look at a district assessment, the Star early. So I'm not going to read the full descriptions, but for our Kinder first and second, we want to look at those early literacy. How are we progressing on foundational skills? For the state assessments, for ELA, math, science, we're going to look at some how we're growing, making growth, getting grade level, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade and then 11th grade. And then for our student. This language, how they're progressing in. But these are the ones we'll look at tonight. I do want to just reiterate one more time, we look at lots of different pieces, talk about success and how. Tonight, we're going to be focusing on. Assessments, they math and English acquisition. Later on, we'll get a few. Going to be looking at how kids are growing, so regardless of where a student is starting, say last year they were a level one, have they moved to a level two? And then we're also going to be looking and seeing who's making those grade level. Okay, so start with our little ones. For Kinder first and second grade, we're really looking mostly that we have those foundational skills and we want to make sure students are progressing. So the keeper, I'm not going to read the indicator and target, but we do have last year's data. This yellow's not showing up great on the screen, but we are highlighting yellow, those grade levels that did make that three percent or more. Are indicating.
I, I mean, grade two killed it.
Yeah. So. Well, part of this is a shift from a dibble. The star and it's not apples.
Got it.
That's a little bit of it. Thank you. That is our only one right now for Kinder. And we really are with them, we're really just focused on growth, don't have those right yet. One of our growth levels is that students from their fourth grade smarter balance to the fifth grade are moving levels. See our fourth graders into fifth grade increased, they're, they grew in. Play portion of. Four percent. Now, when we look at proficiency, that state, that grade level stands bottom here for third, fifth grade. Us made. I also just want to point out, if you want to think about it all, this group of kids is this group of kids. This group of kids is this group. If you want to think of it as a cohort. At the middle school. Have, we want them growing, but we do see that the scores are not as high as at the elementary school, but we do have. There, there are some concerns. This is growth. The slide we have proficiency. Are those same. Eighth grade, we had a, a science.
I'm, if I'm reading. Sixth graders, the sixth. Seventh graders. At thirty.
On the growth.
Yeah, on the growth. Well.
No, no, back where you were.
If you look at seventh grade math. Two, twenty-three, thirty-three, so ten percent of the kids dropped.
It's not a perfect clean cohort, that's just one thing, it's not clean cohort data, but.
And, and is this with testing chain? You're looking at different tests. Six, seven, eight, this is longer test.
This, it, this is the smarter balance assessment by the state.
All the same tests, not the dibbles versus, so we don't have a testing difference.
No.
We're just seeing. Acid drop.
Yeah.
This is, this is what I was speaking to earlier. You're looking at eighty percent of kids at grade level. By eighth grade, there's no way to compensate.
Add to it. If I, if I understand the new stuff right now, OSPI has changed these definitions and going to not go change, potentially change metrics going forward too, so.
Well, and, and one thing, yeah, and, and maybe this is just a good time to pause and talk about that.
Yeah.
For a minute, because, so what, what this is showing is the percent of students who were level three or four, right? And we've always, we, being school systems have always talked about it as like proficiency, that's how the state has talked about it. These are students who are proficient or these are the students who are meeting standards. And this year, what they're communicating is a deeper definition of what level one, two, three and four means. So the, the data is the same, meaning that we were, that like last, in 22, 23, reading seventh grade, that forty-nine percent, that's forty-nine percent were at level three or four. And that, and now like that same-ish group of kids, right? Forty-one percent are level three or four. But what the interpretation and use, I, I, I feel like if it's not just in a vacuum, it's not just OSPI, remember, these are, this is the smarter balanced assessment consortium, there are states across the country who, who use this. They're getting more granular, like what does this really mean? A level one means students do not consistently demonstrate grade level knowledge and skills. A level two means students demonstrate foundational grade level knowledge and skills with a limited range of complexity, which is a more nuanced definition than just like they, they can't read, you know, or they just don't meet grade level standards. They're demonstrating foundational grade level knowledge. Level three means students consistently demonstrate proficient grade level knowledge and skills with a broad range of complexity. And level four is students consistently demonstrate advanced grade level knowledge and skills with deep understanding and a full range of complexity. I think the purpose of the whole consortium is like, just so it's not this simplistic of these kids aren't at grade level standard and these kids are. So that, it just takes a little less of that like alarm of, it doesn't, it doesn't mean we've got fifty percent of the kids who just like can't read or aren't at grade level.
But they're not at grade level.
They're not.
They have some foundational skill.
Right, they're.
They're not.
Yeah. Foundational grade level knowledge and skills with limited range of complexity. Yeah. It's just a little more nuanced definition.
But even then, what you're saying is. Might be helpful is to show us that.
Three, four, yeah.
Two. But regardless.
We still absolutely want all the kids at three or four.
And again, as I've looked into this, I don't believe it's, I do not believe it's our staff. I think we have great teachers. Don't believe it's. There are other factors going on here. We have great teachers, I don't think it's our curriculum.
Well, and maybe we should kind of like, yeah, like we'll get to some of the things that are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so and that's why, we've got to do something major because we are doing majorly not good, twenty percent, right?
Yeah, we, we are working on it. I'm going to hear a little bit. Do you think we should share about the cut scores? Halfways?
Uh. Let's wait on that.
Um, so here's, I'm just moving to high school. Um, and I do want to point out with high school, for example, in science, we, we had five hundred and twenty students not take the. Um, it's not a graduation requirement, so it is, we, with the data we have, those students who take the test. The health of our science, how they're doing, but we can't look at these at the same time because we've not all of our students. And we do have a significant lower participation. High school. Then at third grade. Okay, those are some of the state assessments. We also look at for our students who are English learners, how they are doing. But we have a growth goal for our students and we can't group this one by grade level as our students join at very different. But we look at this one by the number of years. Um, so a student who's getting EL services one year, less than a year, or, and we look at how long they've been in program. Really want our students to be at proficient levels around four, five, six years with us. And we, we did meet, we had a goal of increasing efficiency, exiting WEDA or EL service show that increases.
So again, sorry to ask so many questions, but just to go back, just to be clear, you're saying we want kids by year four, five or six is the goal. In 2023, only four percent of the kids.
Um.
Twenty twenty-four, only seven percent? You're saying ninety-three percent of the kids. Get out of the program after six.
Um, historically, it's been around thirteen. Um, across the state. It's a really, it's a tough, this is a hard.
Oh, I, yeah, just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the numbers.
Yeah.
So ninety-three percent of the kids are in the program for more.
Yes. Yeah.
When do we get most of the kids?
Um, I can pull that for. We get a lot in Kinder. But we also have a lot of new. Different grades.
Those people that. Didn't recognize that they were.
No, no, it's part of the enrollment process.
They're coming from someplace else.
Um, and enroll. Some have been in, in. A number of.
Okay, just trying to understand.
Yeah.
With, with that, I don't know if this takes into account this, like what about a student who comes in in seventh grade, I mean, they're not out of the program at all their entire time, so does this?
Yeah. So if a student came in seventh grade, they would count as that less than one and would ban them there.
Oh.
But to your comments, they are getting very high academic comments in. While learning. The oldest child is. So I, I do want to spend some time on what, what actions are being taken and some bright spots. Um, and I'm going to anchor it into different areas. Be increased learning with. Curriculum, assessment and instruction. All three of these have to be worked together to. Dr. Pierce mentioned earlier, did it take a moment to celebrate before students started? Some of our schools who are showing growth and proficiencies on the key performance. The elementary schools. Did meet the district strategic and. Growth, that's this column here, in reading efficiency, math growth and in math proficiency. I'm going to share in a couple of minutes what these schools are. Also had some middles. Park Middle School in two areas, Desert Hills area, again in that growth and that proficiency area. We also had schools meet our goals in English language development growth and want to celebrate all these and I'm going to share a little bit about what they're doing. At the district level, we are really focusing our attention on making sure we know our standards. Um, we're getting teachers on how to track standards, know what. That they are using targets in their classroom, that students know what they're supposed to be learning. And we also are making sure we've got great. Preliminary data with our new math curriculum. Are looking at our, our K-five ELA. Updated. Um, with assessment, we talked a lot last year about STAR. Uh, we are going to continue with progress monitoring, knowing where our kids are all the time. But we also want to dig deeper into. Data, so we can see where, where do we need to. Um, and then we talked a lot last year, we're going to continue as well as it was put out, strategic plan about profession. And being collaborative in our work together. We have amazing teachers who are doing great. What can we learn from it? How can we do that in other? So all of this curriculum assessment instruction is really layered in those four essential PL questions that I. What do we want our students to learn? How are we going to know? How are we going to respond? And what are we going to do? Kind of see in those questions where curriculum assessment and. So looking at those schools who are getting good growth and meeting those indicators, I spoke with principals at Canyon View, in Westgate and Park. And you'll see in the areas of curriculum, there's a, a word here you see and over and it's. These schools are focused on their. These schools are focused on their standards and they know what students. Um, in assessment, you'll see a focus on data analysis, common format assessments, that they're using data and it's helping them with what they're doing. They aren't just going day one, day two, day three. But does this student need, I'm going to give it. Focus on what. Um, they are giving in the instruction, they're really working on being collaborative, learning from each other. Teaching, um, has to be done as a team. Now, we want to make, and you'll see some of the schools. Cycles to help make sure that classroom and. Our students. Really proud of these schools. With our schools that are making goals for WEDA growth, you'll see something similar. Um, the only addition I'll say is they are helping some students get, uh, grade level content. Um, our students won't catch up if we put them out to just teach English. They have to have classroom instruction or they miss. They have to have that grade level instruction with. Grow in. Um, use a lot of data, not just, um, how they're doing in. But how they're doing. And then we, we looked, we had a few teachers who after we adopted Clear Math last spring, that is all the. In math in elementary. Had a couple of Amen Creek third grade teachers. Um, and it, it was interesting. Um, and so cautiously optimistic and we want to. Now, we've got a lot of work to do with implementation. But these third grade teachers, um, had math scores fifty-five, um, ninety last year. Significant growth, um, because of the rigor that this student exposed. But this is exciting.
Doing it.
Yeah, Amen Creek is, yeah.
How much of this? SBA, did these people? Test. This, do you think curriculum? The teacher's the same.
I, I put curriculum and instruction up here. The instruction was probably similar, but what the curriculum gave us to do.
As, as I'm just trying to be clear, the, the, the teacher hasn't changed. Same teacher, just a different curriculum.
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that's, that's, yes.
Yeah.
Very optimistic. You're, you're.
No, I, I don't think we can replicate this everywhere, but with our PLC practices, like, what are they doing? And let's go watch it. Um, let's get in their classroom and see what can they share with other teachers. Yeah. And same with, we had a first grade teacher at Sunset View. Um, this is STAR, so we didn't have that the year before. But last spring, most of our, um, showing like expected growth was right in that, we talked about being happy about being in the. Um, so seven, this is outstanding.
Ninety percent. Percent of the kids. Grade level of.
Yes, yeah, le- level three or four.
Yeah. This is, this is good. You've got a whole class potentially. At, at third grade. Data that says, if you're doing good at third grade, you're likely to continue.
And, yeah, and again, we'll wait until they dig into the numbers, but my understanding too is now level two is.
But, but not with this.
Not with this, no, but I'm just, I'm just saying like, we'll see some of that.
We may have lowered the bar a little bit. But, but regardless, this, I guess this is what makes me excited. I'm glad we're seeing this and to Mike's point, let's dive in.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think I just want to make one clarification. I, I don't think it's lowering the bar, uh, but I think, like, it's not, you know, and they do a good job on this one pager that I'm going to send you. It's not a pass fail test. So it's just, and we've talked about it. I mean, even we talked about, like, we did these slides, right, recently? Even as, as recent as last week, we're kind of talking about as pass fail. But it's, it's, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not pass fail.
Ninety percent.
Correct. And fifty, and in twenty-two, twenty-three, that group of kids, fifty-five percent were at the level three and four. Yeah.
Now, now, just, the other question, just to. Year before, this wasn't.
These are two different groups of kids.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
The year before, they were second graders. Kids did not kill. We didn't just catch a class.
Well, we, we didn't have the smarter balance in second grade, so I can't, I can't answer that. Um, and I do want.
Yes.
The classes.
But I think that would be, uh, if it's, it is the same teachers, that would be a question for the teacher.
Ask the teacher, is this a class difference? You just have an exceptional class come through here?
Yep, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Part of it is, is again, this is, I was very frustrated with the numbers before, these numbers are very.
Yeah. And, and I do want to be cautious.
Take the wind.
See if it's, see if it's real. If it's real, then it's duplicable and we can take it to other places and make it happen.
Well, and that's why I asked about the PLC, because that's, because if they're doing that, typically where you have two third grade classes, same school, if they've got their professional learning committee. Whatever the word is.
You got it.
That means, I watched that at Park here a couple of years ago and I, I love the way, go from one classroom to the next, they're, that same thing is replicated all the way through. Kids get the same stuff. And then you see how the teachers are then moving, as, as you showed a couple of slides earlier. Some kids need more help than the kids who are doing it or helping those kids and you've got this very dynamic learning environment, which allows for a tremendous amount of improvement. So I think the PLCs are probably one of the strongest things I've seen in the last couple of years.
Also, we did a lot of foundational work last year, our building. You're going to continue that and go. We don't necessarily want to change years. We just want, we are seeing some preliminary win. Um, and we.
And if the stuff that we're giving the teachers in terms of the instructional materials? Because this is like, that's the new, they were using the new math materials that we're now using system wide this year, right? Like, that's the other part of the ingredient. Yeah.
Very, um. Can we cross reference it with, like, I, I hate to even say this because I, I don't feel like our numbers are good on this, but the discipline, the. Look at that, that culture aspect. Uh, I think.
Sorry, Mr. Pacific.
Like, are you asking if there's a correlation between academic achievement of students and behavior?
Yes.
Well, I.
Just within this class or with, across the system or?
The, the.
The stronger the instruction, the less classroom management.
Yep.
Like, when we have kids engaged.
I guess what I'm.
The teacher is, uh, has the.
Yes, and, and I visited this lot, all the schools and, and some of the ones, like a few slides back that I can see that are excelling. Like, when I talk to those principals, I feel like they have a very good grasp on, on that aspect. And I just wonder if there's a correlation. I don't, the way, the way that we, that's a whole nother. Is.
I do want to move now to high school. So, um, and we're just.
Take a deep breath.
We're looking at smarter balance, um, with our high school, um, for this. But all of our big three comprehensive high schools are working in different ways. And that first one is really like making sure students are safe and known, like they belong. All of the principals talked about how they're working on. Ninth grade year and passing classes is so important. So really kicking off and sharing how, um, how welcome they have been at this. Also, and this is really like looking ahead, these are things the high school principals are saying they want to work. Um, but really increasing some communication with students and families about graduation requirements and pathways. Um, and making it, um, more visible, more known to students that this matters and to parents that this matters and this is. Up, this is how. We also are working and are, are, we're going to move in, are in the high. All STAR assessment, but looking at STAR data, looking at this smarter balance. This, really look and where can, where can we do better? Are there certain areas that all students are struggling with? Hit that really hard. Um, and. Uh, we also, the high schools also talked about increased participation. Our students are taking the assessment. Uh, we saw at one of our schools that had a higher participation, did have a higher percentage getting that level. Um, Southridge, uh, was also recognized this year, um, at our Back to School Assembly for their professional learning community. They have focused hard on essentials. Got some learning. Are doing. Got some good next steps.
Good question. What motivation is there? Middle school and high school, what is their motivation to do? What's your motivation?
Our students.
There is none.
What's your motivation to do well?
For me personally, it's to make my parents proud and to go to college. Because I want to have a very, I want, I want to go be a teacher, I want to go to college, and I want to do great and be very successful. But that's what motivates me. I know that other people that, that's not their pathway, their pathway is maybe the army or trade school or maybe none of those. They're motivated more by the thought of graduation and kind of getting out of high school. So they're focused on, let me just get everything done as fast as I can so that I'm done and I don't have to do anything. I think that's where the lack of wanting to go do the extra science test, wanting to sign up for the SATs and A. That's where the lack of motivation comes from, just wanting to be done instead of wanting to invest in.
High school. Trying to find out this, is that an actual reflection as I'm looking at this, it's making me, is that an actual reflection of their ability? Or is this number of kids just not? They're really probably not at twenty percent. They may be, that number much maybe higher, but we're getting, this is demonstrating a lack of motivation, right?
I would say at Southridge, personally, it's about half and half. I know that half of the students are really focused on, they want to do good in their classes, they want to do great in their pathway.
Classes, but on the SBA.
On the SBA.
You see what I'm saying?
I would say it's a lack of motivation.
There's a lot of.
Want to be done, they don't want to.
They do take the test today.
They just want to click and then leave. They don't want to do it.
Again, I'm trying to understand, so, so perhaps you look at the twenty percent. That may not be as accurate.
Well, it's one reason, it's one of the things we look at. We're going to look at grades, we're going to look on track for graduation, we're going to look at different pathways.
Just trying to understand these numbers so that, don't want to get caught up in one number, but I can explain in a second. Eighty percent of kids are not at grade. Part of that may be is a bad number, be, kids are just not. You think that's part of the problem?
I would agree.
And it's not just, I mean, we're not, you could work your way down sixth, fifth, fourth grade and talk to teachers and is it just punch through the test too? You know, like, they just want to.
It's just a.
Get through it to get to recess or whatever.
Part of the words is that, that was never me, so I'm.
That's, it's a.
I'm just trying to grasp. That actually makes me feel a little bit better about it now.
Not in regards to SBA, that's, not that, but just, just, uh, I just wanted you to make a mental note. This year, Kennewick High School really enforcing the cell phone policy. Like, like strongly, I believe. And I suspect that, and I'm not on the SBA, of course, but like in other, I suspect that we're going to see a rise just because of that.
Yeah.
So I just want you to make a mental note.
Noted.
This is, that is happening right now, yeah.
Yeah. I am also, um, I share the same concerns and it is a regular. But we can do better at how, where in the test do our students. That should impact our. Um, so we do need to focus on that work of instruction and. Regardless of. But to just kind of wrap this up and then I can answer more questions. Our strategic plan objectives are really. Our students have better, um, outcomes. And everything in here that, um, Dr. shared are looking at the K-five literacy, our K-five math adoption. At, um, our standards, we're going to be looking at new online materials as well, using STAR, K-12. All of these are goal objectives that we have. Sure that we. Your questions?
I do not have a question. I just want to say thank you to Kathy, Wayne, Dale, Sean, Mia, Angela, Naomi, and your staffs. Great to see, have recognized in the presentation and watching, or you watch this on replay. Thank your staffs for the hard work and.
I will see them tomorrow as well, so I will reiterate that. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the, uh, the one everybody's been waiting for, annual IT report. We're going to make this as exciting as we can, as short as possible.
Can we play League of Legends?
While you're doing this, yeah.
So, Ron, Ron, go.
Where am I? All right, IT president.
Diego wants to play. Diego says he can beat you in Smash. I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll get, uh, underway here. We're going to skip some screens as quick as we can. Presentations outline. So we're going to talk about some of the network data and security stuff, then we're going to talk about student access, learning safety, user support that we're doing, and then some data system. So first up is our network and data security. One's kind of near and dear to my heart. So there's some review where we look at things, testing, we do some planning. That's what keeps us successful and, uh, safe. Uh, so one of the things we do is get in other companies to review us and see that our environment is secure. So currently, we're, uh, doing some work with Trident Group, uh, which is a company out of San Diego that specializes in schools and E-rate, um, projects. So we're using them to come in and do a review of us and evaluate how our safety and security is. At the same time, we've undertaken a project with Microsoft to do the same thing. So they're evaluating us to see that we're at the best, uh, security that we can have. So one part of that is testing. So we do an external penetration testing and an internal penetration testing. So for our external penetration testing, uh, that's been complete and we passed, we flunked on one application, our library system. They logged in to an account using a dumb password, admin password that we were like, how did they log in? We're like, hold it, that account is inactive. We call up the vendor to say, you know, hey, that account's inactive. Why can they, why can you log into it? He said, oh, inactive means they can't check out a book. If you don't want them to log in, you have to delete the account. Okay, so we, we missed out. So that was that. Our internal testing, we're going to be doing, uh, later this year, so we'll get schools started and then we'll kind of work out a time to plan that in the winter. Uh, the next thing is, um, in February, uh, uh, NIST, the National Institute of Standards Technology, put out their NIST II standards. Uh, this was a major update in the framework for security and how we govern it, how we check things. And so we're just, just to let you know, we're using that as our new standard and as we update all of our procedures and policies in the IT department, we'll be looking at it aligning with those new standards. Uh, we also get a lot of assistance from. We also get a lot of assistance from different agencies. And so up here, probably the, the multi-state informational agency there. They provide us more than once a day information on attacks and things that are happening so that we can also be aware and try to respond to those. CISA, they provide us with three very good scans of our systems. So they attack our external systems, scan us and see if we have vulnerabilities and then report back. Ironically, we find most of our vulnerabilities are the tri-tech kids. They set up some systems externally and we'll get in trouble for those. We'll get a bad report. And then I really, I can't thank the FBI, the local office out of Seattle enough. They have for years provided us weekly, every Friday, an update of attacks that are happening in the Pacific Northwest, where they come from and some IP addresses or some DNS records that are doing it. And then we proceed to block all those every Friday. So it's, it's a great, been a great service. It's saved us a lot. Our security strategies that maybe differentiate us from some other districts. Five years ago, we put in a system for air gaps on our backups. So we have a data center here in this building. We also maintain an offsite data center that's smaller in capacity at Southridge. So in the event of a problem, we could go to the Southridge site. Somebody drove a truck through this. What happens is we take a backup here. We take a copy of that backup goes to Southridge. We also have a system here in this data center that comes online. You can't, we don't control it unless you walk in the room and touch that particular keyboard and screen. It brings itself online, takes a copy of that data for the backup, shuts itself off and disengages from the network so it can't be attacked. So it's on for a few minutes a day while it pulls its data and then is often secure. So that's really how a lot of companies save themselves from a ransomware attack. Used to be the old days, we'd take a set of tapes, go to the bank, put them in a vault. Great. Now I'd have to take a small truck full of tapes to the bank to make a backup of our data. So just doesn't work. We also have our endpoint protection. Microsoft renames that on monthly basis. I swear. Currently, I think it's called Microsoft Defender. And we use that system to secure things. So like in an email, example for me, I'm looking at an email and I go, that looks suspicious. I happen to be on my phone at a restaurant. And then seconds later, it pulls it off my phone because it determined, the system determined that it was malicious and it just goes out and without question removes it from all of our devices. We have that. We've upgraded our firewalls again this summer. So that was a major project. And then our web filters that we use, Content Keeper. It's biggest thing that has saved us so many times compared to some other filters is it doesn't allow us to go anywhere that we don't know about. Until we tell it, it's okay to go there, you can't go there. And there are just, just thousands of sites pop up a day that are new and might be malicious. So that, those are the things that we primarily dealt with. And then the MFA is the other one. We make all staff and students use MFA on their accounts. So it's like the, the bank where it has to text you to get your account and go in. And so that information, we are, we are definitely unique. David Stevens came up with the idea and we did a lot of work to get our students on MFA. A lot of districts are not.
So I've also heard some negatives about Content Keeper. What are some of the negatives?
We got a whole section on Content Keeper coming up. Does that work for you? I'll let you, yeah, because I can address this. But the MFA with students, that's a big thing. And what we came up with is we bring all logins and authentication back to here, no matter what. It looks like you're logging into Google. It looks like you're logging into Microsoft. All that stuff comes back to here where we can check it. So what we do with the kids is if they're on the device we gave them and they're using their account to authenticate, then we bring all that back. So we don't take, we, we, their traffic comes here and then goes out. But we don't let them, they don't have to get prompted for an MFA login as long as they're on their device. So it's, it's saved us. It stopped. We used to have hundreds of attacks a day from kids' accounts and that's ended. Student access, learning and safety. So it's getting the appropriate devices, giving some teacher training and support, doing the filtering and monitoring, which is where we'll talk about some Content Keeper. And then that increases the engagement and the learning. So just, so everybody's aware, student devices, we have iPads for kindergartens through grade two. We have about forty-five hundred of those we just ordered. We also use them in some special education classroom environments. Then we have Chromebooks for grades three through twelve and we have about seventeen thousand five hundred of those devices. And all of this was funded through the levy in 2022. So just be ready to support that in 2026 when we need to do this again. Student learning, to help manage the student learning, we have the learning management systems, Schoology and Seesaw. And for those systems, they, we, we work with teaching and learning a lot to integrate the digital curriculum that we purchased so that it works through those systems and helps make things easier for the kids to get access to. All right. Student safety and filtering, Content Keeper. So Content Keeper has been our good and our bad in terms of having some pluses. You know, the unmanaged sites has been great. But one of the problems was a lack of features, especially surrounding the parent controls. And so we've, we've talked to them. They got acquired by Imperial back in December of 2021. Right before the acquisition, we were working with them on some stuff for parent controls. It just kind of died with the acquisition. It became a problem for us. They actually laid off the entire development team that was doing that. And we thought, well, it's dead. We don't know what we're gonna do. We're gonna have to be looking around. And so we'd communicated this kind of with you guys before and we talked about a plan where we were gonna go back and we were gonna sit there and go through sessions with parents, teachers, students, and get a set of requirements, you know, kind of what, what do people want in the system as we're looking? And that plan kind of blew up for us. So I'll explain why and we have some discussion on this. But we started to, we were looking at, at the same time, we're talking about getting that ready, we were looking at all the other content filtering vendors and looking at their products and talking to them. And we started a long, long conversation because we decided to use Linewise as one to work with because Pasco and Richland both use that system. And so we did an extensive investigation with them. And in the end, their team came, you know, was very nice. They came to us and said, we can't do what you want to do. And that, what we can't do is that student MFA. They can't allow that. So they would, we would have to eliminate and turn off the MFA of student accounts. So they're just, we'd be back in the world where they could freely log in, where they give away their password to log in. Anybody from anywhere can log in. And so that's, that's one of our big problems with this. And it has to do with the fact that Content Keeper right now is the only vendor left who brings the traffic back to us. The others all only want to bring the traffic into their cloud environment. And our MFA plan gets in the way of that. And so their products don't, don't work with that. My concern at this time is we, we need that MFA. Without it, we're just that much faster, we're gonna be ransomware. So it's a big concern. So we have been in contact with Content Keeper and what they have done is they've got, they've gone back and they're, they know that they need a parent contact or parent management piece in their program. Good news is they've spent the summer working on it. As of last Friday, we've installed the code on our servers to have the parents be able to have some controls. It's gonna come rolling out in a couple of phases, but the first phase we should have in the next month. We'll try it with a very, very small group of parents first. But that filter, when it comes out, is it's gonna show the parents, they're gonna be able to see the kids, their top sites they go to, their categories, what they've been searching for. I think it's badly titled, but they have what they call a live view. Not real time, so it's, it's really behind the times, but it's close. Minutes behind, but it's, it's there. They're going to be able to let the parent enable and disable access to the internet on the student's device for the, in the first release. In a future release, they're working already on being allowed to set time limits. So Johnny can have three hours of internet today and then the system shuts off. Or I want the system to shut off until six AM tomorrow and Johnny can get on early in the morning before school starts. The client also supports multiple students. So if you've got, you know, three kids in the district, you're gonna see all three kids and you're gonna be able to filter them differently. So you might turn it off for, I don't know, your middle school kid. Leave it on for your elementary and your high school kid. So there's some stuff coming there. The other thing in a future release will be the ability to come in and say, I want to block YouTube on the, on there. That won't be in the first release, but it will be in a later release. So I'm feeling pretty good. We're seeing the actual code and we're, and we're working with the stuff. So we have a Content Keeper comes up for renewal at the end of December. And I'm hoping, and so are they, that they can convince us that we need to renew with their product. But right now, I, we really, that MFA for students is just a lifesaver for us from being.
Oh, do we?
Oh, I was gonna say, did I address Mike's question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We, I know, you know, give parents like a size and stuff like I do, but do we get reports on student access block sites or?
We could.
Inappropriate, I mean, is that something that we see, like we can pull it if we want?
We can pull it if we want. It, it's not some, we have, we have the capability to send a report. Like we, we have a few students who get a monthly report on. Okay, so user support, what we're doing there, you know, it's the staffing, the commitment to service, monitoring, responses, feedback and, and then trying to have a very positive user interface or user experience for staff and students in the district. So skip this. You've seen the slide. So it's just who's in our staff. And the same thing, this is just some of the stuff we're supporting and how we're supporting it with Call Desk, Help Desk and Web App. This is our, what we strive to do. I can tell you this time of year, hard to make these commitments. So old times are less than five minutes. You know, that's, that gets hard this start of the school year. But that's what we're striving for. And responses to tickets where we're getting out and touching it, you know, within one, two days for that. One of the things on the, that we have, this is a picture of the screen in the Help Desk. So they can see this. And up here you'll see the number of calls in the queue and it'll tell you the number of calls in the queue. So they know, they can see that the calls are stacking up in the queue. And then they also see how long people are waiting and they can start to respond to that. You know, okay, I gotta get off this call so I can take another call and, you know, maybe it means cutting a ticket instead of trying to spend a half hour on the phone solving the problem. So they work on that. We also do a survey after every ticket. So we had six hundred and twenty-nine total responses on our surveys this year. Not a super high response rate. We try to encourage them to do that, but, but we get a low, pretty low response rate. But out of those, six hundred and twenty-two gave us a five out of five. Five people gave us a four. One person gave us a two. And one, we got one, one in the system and that was comment just testing the flow, Eric Beach, because we didn't think it was working. So, yeah, so, and those, how they work is any, anyone with a one, I get an email, Eric Beach gets an email and Jake Schultz gets an email. So we can try to address that issue. Twos and threes, Eric and Jake get an email and they, they take a chance to go talk to the person and, and resolve it. And then fours go to Eric and Jake depending on the ticket type, you know, if it's the different products that we're supporting. If it was like a Chromebook, it would go to Jake because he supports that. All right. So our data systems, we've got data entry and collection, data warehouse, then some visualization and analyzation. And that gets us data so we can make informed decisions and continuous improvement. So we had a big update to Power School. I personally have spent two and a half years working with Power School team on the client advisory board to create this new interface. It's a big change for our administrative staff this year and secretaries. It's a much more efficient system to learn from scratch. Quite frankly, I hate it. Hard for me because after twenty years on the system, I know where all the screens are. I don't know where the screens are on this and I have to click. But it is a more intuitive interface. It's, I, I want to do something with a person. So it's people. It'll pop out and I choose staff, students, you know, so contacts, parents. So that's, that's been a helpful upgrade and it's much easier to train. Help staff, we've also created a bunch of resources that we have on a website where they can get to it. This is just an example of one of the pages on there. For the data systems, so data entry and collection, data warehouse. Can I go backwards? We're gonna talk about data visualization. There we go. All right. So we had a, a objective before that we were working on this with the data visualization. The product we were working with was Unified Insights. And last year, right before, you know, it was like, I can't remember what it was, the last day of August, first day of September, right as we're starting school, we get an update and it broke their system. And for us, it remained broke for nine months. We've, we've abandoned the system. We're in the process of working to get a refund on it. But it just, it just didn't work and it's, that broke it for us. So we met with our level directors to kind of figure out some of their key needs, what they needed to be able to help monitor systems. And then, so we talked about those and one of the big areas is the discipline and getting a better sense of how to view that. So we're currently working through a change now where discipline is entered in a system that is incident management. It's, it's a convoluted screen that, that solves a very complex problem, but it is very difficult to use. So we're going to take a different approach. We're going to build forms where we can control the input because what happens is somebody forgets to check the box that they called the police on this incident. And then we get it and ship the data up to the state and the state review process comes back and they want to know, you know, give us an error on that data. So we have problems with that. And by going to the forms input, we can more carefully control it. The form, you can't leave the form until you submit all the right pieces. So when we're doing that, it's gonna help build the right data and then we can use the visualization systems that are in Power School to display that data better. So we're working on that. The other, other one is attendance.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just a little bit confused.
Sorry. Nope.
Part of me. So you're talking, this right here, you're, you're referring to how we, or not we, but staff or whatever can?
Input these, this information.
Right. Okay. So for example.
Yep.
Little Johnny is a whatever, she gets sent out to the tent of the office, whatever. One thing that I hear a lot is, well, it's so hard to like put it into this and put it into Swiss and then they don't talk to each other. And so I just, I just don't record it or it just takes so long to record, right?
That's what we're trying to solve.
Okay, so that's, that's.
That's exactly what we're trying.
That's what you're addressing right now. Okay. That's why I want to make sure I was on the same page.
I wanted, so that they could just go to that kid on the teacher screen or an administrator screen, like the form. put the form and say, you know, start the dropdowns. What did, what did Johnny do?
It syncs them both?
And then it will, it will actually not sync out to Swiss. But we're going to try to encourage people to move to using the visualization system in Power School as opposed to Swiss because we could gather all that same data along with the data that we have to put in there for the state reportable and the federal reportable incidents.
Is there a reason why we would need to have it in Swiss at all? Because everyone says that they have to.
The reason it's in there now is because they get nice graphs that we haven't been able to provide. And now we will be able to provide.
So literally, they don't need to, well, hopefully soon.
Hopefully soon, yes. The other thing we're looking at is Power School has an early warning system that we're looking to implement that will, it uses data from incident management. It uses the data from attendance and the kids' grades to project whether they're going to be at risk for graduating and at risk for being successful. So we're looking at that system and we'll be reviewing that. Our objectives for this next coming year are to develop and implement that data system for improved efficiency of that academic monitoring and reporting. Document implement the data validation process to ensure data accuracy and integrity. Where that comes in is in the state reporting pieces. There's just errors that occur. It's human nature, it's people being busy. And so we're trying to get more systems in place and more checks and balances on that data to make sure it's right. So I'll, I'll just, I'll use an example from today that my team and I spent some time on. And that happened to be, we discovered that we had five kids who have what's called a T one. It means they were transferred in district. This district isn't gonna report them on the graduation progress as a dropout. But they never arrived at the next school in district. So that's a problem. And so this happens to be one where, okay, we're gonna now create, well, we have a bug plug software that we developed that pulls up and shows these, these types of problems and how to correct them in Power School. We're gonna be implementing this one as another one of those. So that the staff sees those when they log into Power School, there's a bunch of blue buttons at the top. And so they can see, oh, I got five kids that are missing my foreign language, or missing their language. You know, missing maybe their race, ethnicity. There's just certain things that get missed at the start of school especially for registration. And so it just helps us get that data and make sure it's clean. And then the other end is, as the data is going, we're now gonna spend more time with other departments reviewing the data as it's going up for the reporting. Like the graduation data, we'll be spending more time with Matt or Alyssa and just discussing that information. We're also looking for an online transcript fulfillment service to just make it easier for students and alumni to request their transcript. And then we're gonna be creating an enhanced technology incident response plan. We have a start of one, so you'll be seeing us bring that forth to the board because that will be components in there for everybody. And it's, it's an extensive plan to try to, how we would respond if we were compromised, what we would do. And questions?
Further questions? Thank you, Ron. Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
All righty, moving along. We didn't, we already moved our business up. So next meeting agenda, we will be scratching the study session. So we had that tonight. Business meeting will be family parent involvement and engagement efforts. Twenty-four, twenty-five plan for Get to Know KSD.
The No Study Session.
No Study Session, next. We will have the Family Navigator back on the agenda. And then I have a note here about the discussion about a lot of the obvious. I think it probably don't. And then OSPI information, I don't know if that's a agenda item or if that's a follow-up for.
Well, why don't I get it to you and then if you guys. Item, we can do that too.
Perfect. And then. All right, anything else for next agenda, one more? If not, we have no other businesses authorized by law and we will adjourn this meeting before nine o'clock. Got it.